Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And in accordance with the open meeting law, the board states that, for the record, this meeting is being recorded by Norcam and is being broadcast by Norcam. It may be recorded by other local media. The meeting is also being recorded by the town and being broadcast by Zoom. If you could please all rise to state pledge allegiance.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Gilberto, I don't know if I need to repeat that, but this meeting is being recorded because it didn't record, it didn't catch the, for the record, that we're being recorded by Zoom. So I'm gonna just repeat that. All right, so, welcome our first order of business. First order of business is to introduce our new town engineer and water superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. And I know that a number of us were here, or were virtually at a meeting on Saturday when we met the two folks who are seated there. But I'm pleased to introduce both the new town engineer. I'll introduce him in order of appointment. Dan O'Donnell, who's seated there in the blue shirt. He started with us in January and succeeds John Clipfel in the office of the town engineer. He's working on capital projects for the town, both for our roads, but also for water as well. Probably most importantly, when residents call and have issues that are related to the public works infrastructure, they're often dealing with the town engineer. So we thought it important to introduce Mr. O'Donnell to the community and to the board here this evening. Dan comes to us from the town of Brookline, where he was in the engineering department for a few years. And we are glad to have him on board as part of our public works department. So, Dan, welcome.
Welcome.
And to Dan's left is Matt Prince, who is our new water superintendent. He succeeds longtime water superintendent Mark Clark. He's been with the town for, is it nine years, Matt?
Yeah, a little over nine.
A little over nine years, working with Mr. Clark and with the water crew out of the highway garage. Probably knows every square inch of our water system at this point, is my guess, both from the management level, but also from hands-on experience, too. So we're really excited to have Matt in this position to join the management team of the public works department. Matt has quite a bit of experience and familiarity with our system. And I think we'll be in good hands moving forward with him in this role. So, Matt, it's not necessarily welcome, but congratulations on your appointment. And we're glad to have you. And again, much like Mr. O'Donnell, when there are issues or complaints relative to issues in the water department, they often come to the water superintendent. So the public can expect to have some interaction with Matt if anything comes up. So again, welcome. Thanks.
Can you fix the Zoom video? Welcome, and it's nice to have you here. I don't know if you want to say anything, but we welcome you from the select board.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, great, happy to be on board.
Glad to be here.
Good, yeah, great. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to our next order of business, which is a wastewater sewer project. The board has may be taken. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Put this on as more for just an opportunity for the board to share anything or have any discussion that they wish to have.
Yes.
I know we had a special town meeting last week where amendments to the town's betterment bylaw were approved. We also had an information session on Wednesday night in the distance learning lab that I know a few board members were at as well, where there was a presentation that was made. It was not my intention to go through the whole presentation this evening, although I can certainly put it up on the slide for discussion if need be. But really, just wanted to provide an opportunity for discussion, if any, that needed to happen. We have two additional workshops scheduled for early April, where we will go through the, whatever version, the presentation we have at that time.
Sure. I'd ask if you could just, with the slides with the options on the board, can take a look at that again?
Sure.
That would be helpful. But, Mr. Studo.
So, I think so we can move on to something favorable and that we can show the public and they can have as much time as possible before the main meeting. I think that we should vote tonight to strike the betterment option in its entirety and just focus on the privilege option and the variation of thereof in combination with possibly adding an inflation adjustment rider. So the costs go up for any kind of connection, you know, it can keep up. So it's that, you know, whether it's 10,000 a day, I'm just throwing that number, or later. But that's, that is what I think would be the prudent manner so then we can move on. Because I'd like, I think the town needs to have as much time as possible with what the final proposal will look like. And I also think that will alleviate a lot of the confusion where it's now, you know, there is, you know, for better or for worse, still this slide showing it. So I think Mr. Gilberto's bringing it up. But that's my proposal tonight, the select board moves to strike the...
So, in terms of the options that we were considering, option one is the payment townwide by the tax payment that all ratepayers would cover. I think option two has like three different types of options involving a betterment assessment.
No, involving a privilege connection fee.
Oh, a privilege connection, all right. So the ones on the end were the betterments, right?
Correct.
Let's just call it up just so we can take a look at it.
It's not in the packet?
No, it's right behind you.
I actually can't access my packet for some reason.
Yeah, you can just get ready.
Thank you. So the option, option in the first column, no betterment or privilege fee. Second, third, fourth column was opt-in. An opt-in, which I don't understand what that would mean. When you opt-in to connect, if the system is built, you're gonna pay a privilege fee. And that has to be that percentage or that... I know the last slide that we looked at, at least it was explained in the public hearing, was like five, 10, or 20, I think, depending on what year or how far. And I know Mr. Waller had made that suggestion. Maybe there should be some, keeping with the time escalation, let's say $5,000 now is not gonna be the same as $5,000 20 years from now, or 30 years from now. And then the other three on the end, one, two, three, which is the betterment... Oh, boy, I can't read that far away.
It's the betterment...
Oh, the betterment leads, yes, all right. The three options on betterment leads and three different variations of that. So, Mrs. Studo, it's you're asking the board to vote to just excise those all together.
Correct.
Okay. Any, let's hear, I like to hear from my colleagues on that. Mr. Waller, any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I think that eliminating these three right here makes a lot of sense. That's the betterment. And then we're only focused on the four.
The five, 10?
Privilege fees.
And Mrs. Gonzalez?
I agree. Just get it out of there.
So then, Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, through you, just a couple of things that I will share since we had the, I believe, information session with the last discussion. But I know there's a question about, to what extent can we change that privilege fee over years as time goes on? That's something that we're trying to get some firm guidance from both town council and from the Department of Revenue. We don't have a conclusive answer on that at this point in time. It's possible special legislation may be required in order to do that. But as I understand the concept, it is to make sure that when people are tying in five, 10, or 15 years down the road, that they're paying five, 10, or 15 year down the road prices or value. So that's something that we are still looking at. A second thing I just want to clarify for anyone, where I know this has come up with regard to the assessment of privilege fees. So the concept of the privilege fee is that you only pay when you choose to connect. And I think that that's all been made pretty clear. The one thing I do want to note is that if it is, if you choose to connect, you do have an option, you may have an option not to pay at that point in time and to instead pay it back over a period of time, sort of like a betterment. So I think that's actually an advantage, honestly, for anybody who's looking to connect. But, so that's where I'm getting to. So talking with town council, it would require the assessment of a lien. But that lien only happens if a person doesn't pay it back at that point in time. And it only occurs if somebody is looking to connect. They aren't assessed anything upfront when the project is approved. That would need to be done through the form of a betterment. So I just want to clarify that because I know it's come up.
No, but I also think in terms of any of these options, and as we were looking at these figures anyway throughout these meetings when this was rolled out, it does not seem, it seems like every option that we have on the table, it requires additional taxes, no matter what, across the, across the town, across the town. Every single one of these options. But we did hear from so many homeowners along the route, homeowners that have their homes that really were just that, that type of an assessment was just so large that it was kind of, it was an insurmountable cost. So, I mean, I think, I don't think, I don't think the majority of us were in favor of that in the first place, but it has to, had to be put on the table of consideration. It doesn't really move the dial in terms of lowering that, you know, lowering the amount. It would only move the dial in terms of the debt exclusion. So, Mr. Studo.
And what I'll add is that, I'd say the word I heard more than anything from, I think, that first week in October up until the town meeting is choice, right? Choice. This is choice. And I think the other thing to consider, I mean, another thing that would have been well established by internal contractors is that when the choice does come, if this vote was to go through, the only estimate we don't have yet is what it costs to decommission a septic, which we're getting. But voters will have a fair measure of what it would cost to replace or repair a septic plus decommission their current. And I feel that that's gonna be, that's the choice. The choice becomes that you tie in for X or you pay for, you know, whatever a new septic will cost in the future. So I just want to add that that's where the, there's always gonna be an incentive, right? If there's not a personal incentive to do something, you're not gonna do it. Meaning that in the future, if, let's say, we chose the option, I mean, if we chose the option in the middle where a single-family home in today's dollars, a connection fee would only be 10,000, outside of that decommission cost being $20,000, there is no place where a septic replacement would cost more. The only other consideration, though, would be, as some have brought up, is that then you have to look at estimated sewer costs. Because there are sewer costs if you plug it. So I just want to point that out that, you know, it's something where we arrived at this by pretty much taking all the feedback. And also, I do like to add that the privilege fee conversation was alluded to as early as January. So this is not something that just happened on February 13th. It's just that it got put into a presentation for that February 13th. But if you rewind the tape, it was alluded that a privilege fee option was something else being considered as early as January. Just not that this is much pizza. But...
That's my hand, I'll be up for a discussion tonight. Okay.
So just a little extra discussion. Because we haven't figured out the escalation for the privilege fees. So, maybe I'm just saying, you know, that I think going forward that we don't go about betterment and we should make it clear where we're going. But there is a risk if there isn't an escalation, we may want to reconsider. You know what I mean? There may be something there. So I don't know if we should be voting betterment out or if we should just be saying, please take it out of the presentation going forward. And let's make every effort to make privilege work. But if it doesn't work, I mean, we don't want to lose that ability to be able to reconsider if we have to. And I'm not sure how to handle that.
I don't know, though, if that makes a difference with Mr. Waller only because even if there, even if a betterment option made sense, I mean, the same thing applies. I don't know if we would be able to add a inflation rider to that, for lack of a better way to put it.
Well, you wouldn't on a betterment.
You wouldn't. That's the, so meaning on the privilege, it's something where I think, Mr. Gilberto, wasn't this already asked if we could do it or we just didn't get the answer yet?
So, the guidance from the Department of Revenue indicates that you can reassess the privilege fee along the way. What we're trying to determine is what form that takes and how that occurs. What we do know is that it appears a lot does not allow the privilege fee to be reassessed for the purpose of providing a rebate to people who had already paid. Meaning that can't recover in the future costs for money that we already paid at the time of construction or shortly thereafter. The guidance appears to be pretty strict with regard to that. And we're trying to find our way through, can we do special legislation to do that?
Is there a particular metric? There's a lot of things you can peg it to because I feel like that's the only fair way where the public knows that it wasn't an arbitrary number. It was type of super price index or any other, you know, pick one of the 10 different COLA increases that is used across local all the way to federal government. Because I feel like that's important to determine kind of their, it is an economic thing. It is not a future board determining what the new one is. It's a future board saying it's being reassessed, but it's being reassessed because this metric hit X. So I don't know if there's one that they have in mind.
So I haven't found one that's existing. But if we are proposing special legislation, which you recall from the very beginning, we talked about having to do with regard to privilege fees. I would imagine if we propose something that made economic sense, that it would be looked upon favorably.
Mrs. Gonzalez. And Mr. Studo, could you explain to me the advantage or disadvantage of the five, 10, and 20? The tax rate doesn't change, nothing changes. Is it just to pay down the debt?
Well, it doesn't change either because there's no guarantee we'll get them. So when there's no guarantee, you have to show the, you know, the only guarantee right now is that we, if the whole town got assessed, we would get the 1116. So that's why that number doesn't change. Because it's not, I guess you could change it if you hypothetically say, what if X number paid X? But again, that would be an exercise where we could, what if, until, you know, forever.
Okay, it's just a little confusing. But I also think if I, if I, it's, you can't, these models were rolled out to determine how to pay for the project. But that model that was put in there was to show how to pay it down over the course of time based on those payments in. So, so you, that's why the 1116, and that's an average. That's not the precise figure. That's based on a single-family home value of 745,000. That's an average. So it's not gonna be one 1116 across the board. But it's a way to pay that, pay that down over the course of time as people tie in or as parcels tie in. So, you know, as a benefiting parcel ties in, they would pay that, and that would work towards, you know. But we can't use that because it's an unknown, it's an unknown number of who would tie into it. That's why that stays the same. But I do think for today, Mr. Waller, I think it's time for us to make a decision on this. If there's a, if there's a majority of the members present that want to make a decision on this, at least to shrink down, to shrink down these models. And we can, we can iron out the details of that method. But if we want to take the betterment lien option upon construction off the table, and this is all going to, you know, if that's what we want to start zoning in on, these other two options, and whatever scale that is or whatever, whatever that arrangement comes out to be, I think now is the time to do it so we can just kind of zone in on those two and see, we can get more information as it comes along. I think it's time. We've talked about it enough. I know that Mr. Gilberto and the, and just different people have been coming to these meetings to talk about it. But I'm not getting a great sense from my discussions with people, not the board, but people in the town, that many people are in favor of that option as far as my discussions. But I am getting a sense from the people that I talk with, and we all have different circles, that they, that individuals understand the need for it and also that it is gonna better the entire, the entire town. It's gonna have some improvement in the entire town. That, not necessarily is the discussion that we've had from people attending our meetings or going to the informational sessions. But I have had that discussion with people as I've interacted with people in the town. Have a difference of opinion of the people that we have heard from saying, no way, no how. We don't want it, it's bad. You know, the people that have come to the meetings. We don't want it no matter what. Even if it was free and it didn't cost anything to the town, we don't want it at all. We like the way that it is. We've heard predominantly that voice here and that narrative here. But I've had some different narratives as I talk to other people that I, you know, that are residents of the town. So, and I haven't been keeping a score sheet of how many or what happened. But I've heard a difference of opinion as to not only the need for this, but the desire to have it in the town for the better, for the overall benefit of the town. So I think as far as moving forward, I think we could make a decision on which models we want to zone in on now, moving forward, if there's a majority of the board. It sounds like, it sounds like there's a, here a unanimous majority to just flock those three off. So I'd like us to do that, if we can take a vote on that this evening.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I motion to remove the betterment option for further discussion for the wastewater funding project.
Finances.
Finances and scenarios.
To remove it? Did you say the removal of the option to...
Remove all the betterment options.
Find the betterment, the betterment.
Second.
All right, so motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. Waller. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
So now we can streamline, zone in, get moving on the rest.
Yep.
All right, next order of business is a joint appointment with the Community Planning Commission and the Economic Development Committee.
Madam Chair, through you to the town planner who I saw somewhere in the room. Do we have a quorum of the...
Yes.
CPC, we do.
Two are here, two are...
Mr. Chair, can you come and join us and just give us the names of the members that are here, just for the record? And Mrs. Callender, can you put the light on? Thank you. And EDC, our chair from EDC, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Madam Chair, Christopher Hayden and Warren Pierce are present. Jeremiah Johnston and Ryan Carroll are on Zoom.
Okay. All right. And from EDC.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Mr. Wallace, you're not voting? We're not voting. You can't vote.
I'm not voting.
Yes, she is.
Oh, you're on panel. She's a voting member and I'm a voting member.
All right.
Right, now I'm this.
I feel exactly the same. All right, so do we have a motion?
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to jointly reappoint the following individuals to the Economic Development Committee for the terms and conditions stated below. Three associate vacancies and as a roll call, Pat Lee member through March 3rd, 2026.
Second. Motion by Mr. Waller, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, and the roll call for the select board, Mr. Waller.
Pat Lee.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Pat Lee.
Mr. Studo.
Pat Lee.
Andy Kelly is Pat Lee.
Mr. Pierce.
Pat Lee.
Mr. Ryan. Oh, Mr. Carroll, I'm sorry. Get on mute, so.
Pat Lee.
Mr. Johnston.
Pat Lee.
There he is. Mr. Hayden is Pat Lee.
All right.
EDC.
EDC. Do we need a vote independently from the EDC, Mr. Gilberto?
Yes, it is a joint appointment.
Okay. You want to call and roll for us?
I don't have that. I'm sorry, did you all call Mr. Lee's name? I thought I heard, I thought I heard it.
We did both.
Yeah, I thought I heard you call his name.
But I did report the select board, so we all voted him on the select.
And then the planning commission did as well. I heard four, the planning commission vote. Should be good.
So we welcome Pat Lee.
Oh, EDC doesn't need to?
It does not, no. Sorry, I misunderstood your question.
We're gonna have, we would have done the vote anyway. I think it's pretty unanimous, at least from the voting mechanism, that we want Pat Lee to return.
That's correct.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. All right, now we're gonna move to our, thank you for joining, departmental budgets. We're gonna begin with Community Planning Commission. To my colleagues, that's page three. Give you a minute to get on your laptops and iPads to get to the page or your cellphone, however you're reading the packet for the select board, or whatever device you're reading your packet for the select board. It's on page 381. Welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. McNeigh, Mr. Hayden. Please take it away.
Madam Chair. The proposed FY '24 CPC budget... Oh, excuse me, I have a PowerPoint. Excuse me.
Mrs. McNeigh, it could not be a presentation without a PowerPoint.
I apologize, my PowerPoint is very helpful to us.
Yeah, page, page 381. Around there, at least that's what is in my packet.
Back to me, yep. And if you need me to help you with it, I can.
I can't.
The proposed FY '24 CPC budget is a level services proposal. And as requested, I will be focusing only on changes and issues in my presentation. Can you hear me all right? Over the past two years, $10,000 has been provided in small capital for the planning department to work with New England Civil Engineering on updating the subdivision regulations, making them consistent with the town's stormwater bylaw and current best practices. This work is underway. An initial review has been done and we anticipate completion of the updates by the end of the fiscal year. At that time, the CPC would hold a public hearing to make the needed changes to the subdivision regulations and site plan review regulations. No further small capital funds are requested this year as the project will be completed. Continued support of the town's economic development initiatives is proposed with a budget for the EDC within the professional services budget. The amount requested for this year is $20,000 as it has been in prior years. The funds are anticipated to be spent once again on a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to encourage patronage of local businesses through the Shop the Reddings campaign as well as the annual business networking event in June. The EDC is currently also working on a promotional video for the town. The professional services other line item includes the fee for membership in the Regional Housing Services Office, which will be $14,500 in FY24 as it was in FY23. This year, the service model was changed from a full-time staff person in Reading and a four-hour-a-month consultant to all services being provided by a single consulting firm. Through an RFP process, the five participating communities selected AMSUR advisories with whom we have been working since the summer. This new arrangement has so far been very successful. As in FY23, several objectives for FY24 relate directly to the Community Master Plan, which was completed in 2020, and the Housing Production Plan completed in 2018. The CPC looks forward to working with the Select Board on master plan and housing production plan priorities in conjunction with the Select Board's strategic plan initiatives. In the interest of moving forward with developing properties in the Affordable Housing Overlay District, the CPC will be working with the Wetland Scientist and Local Surveyor to complete the due diligence work funded in the town meeting appropriation in 2022, anticipated to be complete by the summer. Additionally, the CPC is nearing completion of a draft bylaw that would allow and regulate accessory dwelling units in order to provide another option for housing for those in need of small, modest units within a single-family home. The CPC has been discussing the bylaw for more than a year and anticipates completing its draft and holding a public hearing in preparation for inclusion in the October 23 town meeting warrant. The CPC recently completed the Main Street/Winter Street Conceptual Design Plan, which is especially relevant with the recent news that the vacant Stop &amp; Shop parcel is on the market. This year, the planning department has applied for and anticipates granting of the town's designation as a Housing Choice Community, a program that provides substantial grant opportunities, including planning and infrastructure funding that may or may not be directly related to housing projects. Designation also gives the town higher points in scoring grants in the One-Stop Program, including MassWorks. The town is eligible for this designation by virtue of having increased its residential building permitting activity by more than 5% over the past five years. The designation is anticipated to be awarded this spring and would be good for five years. The CPC also expects to continue working through the requirements of the MBTA communities during this year. If funds are needed for additional GIS or other analysis in order to complete our compliance application, they would be sought either through technical assistance programs offered by the state or through a warrant article if these programs are found to not be a good match for the town's needs. No change in our operating budget would be anticipated. This is the only changed line item. It would be that we are requesting no small capital. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
That was fast. Okay, two questions from my colleagues. Mr. Wallner? All set? Mrs. Gonzalez? Mr. Studo? From the Finance Committee. Mrs. Callender?
It may not approach you, but in your narrative you talked about a small cap, $24,000 for the MBTA analysis. I don't see it in your budget.
Right, so actually, I'm sorry that I had forgotten to remove that from probably the version of the narrative you received. After I had my meeting with the Town Administrator and Acting Finance Director, we discussed the fact that that's not really appropriate for capital and that it would be better requested as a warrant article if the funding is. It's out of this budget request, yes.
Members of the Finance Committee, any questions? Any of our members of the Finance Committee joining us online that have any questions? Does anyone join in online? I can't see that far. I have three quick questions. And again, the budget hearing when we hear from our departments is a lot of, it's an opportunity also rested to thank you for all the effort you, the effort that you and the CPC take on behalf of the, of the town. We appreciate, we know this is a really busy year for you and as usual, but we appreciate it, and you do. And I was glad to see that those initiatives, because they were at another town meeting, not the ADL, but the other, I mean, the ADU, but the other parcels. Do you have an idea of when those surveys will be finished?
We would like them done by the summer. I had, as soon as the town meeting funds were appropriated, I had inquired with a number of consultants, but they were so busy through the fall that nobody could give me a timeline or put us on a schedule. But I'm hopeful that that will happen, you know, as soon as possible this spring.
So it would be kind of good to put those on the October town meeting if that's the plan to move it forward, to have those three parcels up for consideration. I mean, it's a difficult time right now, but. And then the second thing is on that, that proposed bylaw. Do you think that the draft will be complete in time for review and recommendation for the town meeting in October?
I do. The last few times the CPC has discussed the draft, they have been almost satisfied with it. There have been a few details that needed to be changed and then reviewed again by the Building Inspector to be sure that they wouldn't become problematic. But at this point, I'm, we're hopeful that there will only be maybe one or two more CPC discussions and that once the CPC agrees that they're happy with the text of the draft bylaw, that we would just go ahead and schedule the public hearing in anticipation of October.
In the context of that bylaw, does it address maybe units that are already established? Does it, you know, basically retroactively allow them? Or is there any consideration given to that?
There is a special permit requirement for all units, so if somebody does have a unit already in their house, they probably would have the opportunity to submit for a special permit, but they would need to apply. Now, in terms of there being an amnesty program, that would probably be a policy that the Building Department could establish, but it wouldn't be addressed in the bylaw itself.
Okay. All right. I think, I think we're all good, right? Did you hear both of them, anything? Anyone off that? Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Budget is.
I would give it, I'm dumb down at these ears.
Thank you. And next is the Hillview Commission's budget for our, for our committee members and Select Board members. That's on page four. So if you're looking on your laptop or your computer or your phone to get to the packet for this evening, it's on page four of the budget. Yes. Page four.
Good evening, Select Board members. Madam Chair, Mr. Goberdo, finance committee. All right, so we're gonna talk about the Hillview budget. As you can see, in comparison from 2023 to 2024, it's essentially flat. We've highlighted the one category where it does go up significantly here, and that is, that's just the contractual increase with GFMI. The interesting thing on that, I think, is that this is the final year of that contract, so we formed a subcommittee. So we'll be exploring all the options of how the golf course is gonna be run, you know, starting next year. But we have this year to work with GFMI, see if there's any change in structure that we might want to explore. So I think that's, that's gonna be interesting. Other than that, though, flat budget. Really nothing else that we're looking for.
We do.
I guess we go over the questions this morning.
All right, to my colleagues, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Wallner?
Sure, two questions. One is on other, what is the 47, 600, did you already say it? I didn't hear. Yes, that's just a contractual, this is the contract with GFMI. They manage the golf course.
Okay.
So this is just, it's the final year of that deal, and that's the percentage increase that was associated with it.
So that was already established before?
Yep.
Well, so the management contract will go out to bid, and that's just anticipating, you know, what the increase may be in the interest fee.
Okay, it's a consistent increase.
Okay. And the second thing I don't see is revenue. Is, you know.
So the revenues outside of the expenses, we try to talk about. The revenue, it is growing this year.
Where are we at?
So for many years.
Give us a number?
I believe last year we were at about 2.1 million, which was a great year for us. Not as high as the, you know, COVID 2.25 that was very exciting, but our numbers are still staying up a bit, but they start to level off as people get back.
So in looking at the past few years, we went from 0% increase, 0% increase, then 23, 22, sorry, 9% and 8%. This year, we're saying it's 2% for revenues. You know, I, we kind of think maybe the COVID spike or people doing that, like, it would stop. But, you know, we don't know enough to say, ah, it's gonna go down. It could go down. But right now, we're still being pretty optimistic that it could just go up as well.
I'm sorry, just one more question. And how does the, I know we have a new manager in there running the functions and everything else like that. How's, how's that working out and how does that affect your bottom line?
The expansion partner is Ultra Sheik Decor. It's a, has been a lifetime. I know you guys have met them out of writing. They're wonderful. It's been going really well. We spent a good portion of last year kind of bringing the building up to code, getting a lot of basic repairs done just to allow them to be operational. They've been consistently operating events. I know more recently they did the Batch Elder School Function. They got the junior prom back, so it's very exciting there. And they have been paying a monthly license fee on top of utilities for the building. And their 3% shared revenue should be starting in, within a couple of months.
So one more question, sorry. So on that topic, is, are they responsible for advertising their services? Or is that something that's part of your budget?
You don't have it anywhere in our.
That's there.
It's on them?
Yes.
It's on them.
Okay.
Yep.
Because it would be good to get the word out again, because it's been shut down for so long, you know?
Yeah, there is, their revenue is part of the revenue stream that was not ticked this year.
Okay. Good, thank you very much.
Can you, I mean, we have in the budget question packet, but where is it on there? Because I, I have the same question as you, Mr. Wallner. Because you've got the course rate fees, the car rentals, the range, and then facilities rentals.
That's it.
Facilities rental.
Yep.
So they're just paying a flat rate in to use the facility? Is that what it looks like you have?
Yeah, so they have a monthly license fee, which is almost equal in rent. And for the first two to three years, I believe it's $3,500 a month. And then on top of that, they pay the utilities, which I invoice them based on usage. And after, I believe it's April 2023, as a part of their contract agreement, the 3% revenue share kicks in. So they'll be paying back to the town 3% of their gross each month.
In addition to the, yes. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't mean to jump.
No, no, it's a good, it's a good.
It's only carrying 24.5 in this. Facilities rental amount. Is there somewhere else it's carried in here? I don't see it there.
Maybe it should be a little bit higher.
I didn't see any questions saying why isn't it 36,000?
Yeah. And they've been in there for a while, right? Since?
About a year, I think.
About a year?
It'll be here in April.
But there's nothing in reported income for the last year's budget.
They didn't start paying utility, student license fees until December of this year. So it would be December through current. Because the building wasn't operational for them initially, so they weren't making any money.
They didn't rent it out at all last year?
No, they didn't, not until December of 2022. Were they able to, you know, utilize the kitchens and do that type of work. So that's when the commission enacted the rent.
Mr. Wallner?
I'm good.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
The building maintenance.
Just general, you know, bringing the building up to stuff, electrical work, plumbing work. We do have plans to bond the roof. The roof has been.
I was gonna ask about the roof.
Constant patching.
Yes.
You know, that, that's the big headache. You know, the little finger in the dam is kind of constantly happening over there, but there've been a great amount of improvements within the past year. And the roof is the next big project for the commission as the bonds start to drop off.
Okay.
First, bank service fees?
Credit card fees.
Okay.
Credit card fees for.
Yeah, for accepting. And then are they, I believe, I was at that batch event, we're really good. And it was packed. I mean, they, they're getting, they're getting there.
Yeah.
Because it was really busy. But are they, are they gonna also make the pub operational at some point?
That is their goal. You know, the commission has asked them to do a write-up of what their plan for the pub would be for review. They would like to try to open it up this year, but obviously, you know, we need to first go through the commission and then come to this board. So it's just a matter of them finalizing their plan, what they'd like to do down there, and presenting it to the commission.
And would that, would that increase the license fee? Is that like, would that be a separate or is it just an increase to be open?
It would change the license fee. The license fee is part of the contract, but it would increase the gross.
So the 3% stays flat, but it would include anything?
All of their gross revenue.
All their gross revenue.
Yeah, including the upstairs and downstairs.
When does that begin?
I believe it's April 23, 2023.
And would they, I don't know if we can pass this, but was it a, if you had that space, was it a requirement to make it accessible during, you know, no more like Tuesday to Sunday golf, Monday tournament? Is it something like, would it be obligatory or kind of like whenever they want to do it? Because I, again, I haven't, I wasn't in town last time it was operational, but it seemed like one of the, one of the things people would say is that it was kind of like, sometimes it was open, sometimes it was not, so it wasn't consistent. I mean, it seems that, there's a couple businesses in North Carolina that do that, you know, but for that in particular, if I'm playing golf on Tuesday versus Friday, it's like, just knowing that, I would plan differently. You know, so I don't know if there'd be some kind of contractual obligation to be open X hours every day.
With the previous partner it was in their contract to have it open, I believe it was lunch and dinner time, breakfast was never required. That was always offered as an option. You know, they kind of fluttered a little with their hours based on, from what I told, having staffing issues. So they didn't have chef for a while, so they closed, things of that nature. Ultra Sheik, I don't believe it's written in their contract as of right now because the pub wasn't a part of the initial plan. So that's gonna be part of, you know, when they come forward to the commission and let us know what they'd like to do in the pub. And then I believe there will probably have to be a contract to go, you know, renegotiation at that point, or at least some change or some updates.
Can I say more? Because sometimes a very inexpensive experience of just, let me rephrase. Semi-expensive experience of public golf course could lead to something bigger like, because I know that there's a lot of people that, you know, they coach or run youth sports at play. And maybe just a good experience at the pub could lead to a much bigger banquet versus somewhere else, versus a bad experience says golf is good and that's where it ends. You know, that's why, you know, that's why I say it, just as I think it can spiral to the good.
Yeah, they, very high priority for them to embrace the community and do a lot of community events. That's why they were so excited to get to the batch event, to get the prom back. But they, you know, they are focused on trying to reach out to the community as much as possible because, you know, they want to embrace being a town building and being a part of the town.
And then one final question, do you have the balance of the underpriced fund at this point?
Of the what?
Of the fund, the Hillview.
The most recent one that we saw was from May of 2022. And the, what are you talking about, the reserves?
Yeah.
It was about 820, 830.
Thank you. Just ask me.
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, just a question. So are, how are, like, for volume on golfing, how are we doing? Are we like at 70% of capacity?
100%.
How much?
100% capacity.
Oh, so there's no reason to advertise more than you already have?
For the golf, the golf is doing quite well.
Okay. So then is there an opportunity then if we're at 100% capacity to increase rates and?
The commission's discussing that. They typically do a every-two-year model where they, you know, kind of fluctuate with the rates and add, but they also do comparables to other courses such as Sagamore. See what they're doing, because they also don't want to price themselves out of the market.
Yeah, yeah. It seems like if you're at 100% capacity.
Right.
We understand that, yeah. Discussion's on it right now.
Either that or if we're under capacity, let's start getting social media going. Let's get some ads going, right, running this way. So something like that. Thank you.
They're always busy then. There's never a time that I don't track by except at night that it's not kind of there. Any questions from the Finance Committee, Mr. Callender?
On your table in the, the package labeled F Tools and Plan, big, big spreadsheet. On the utilities expense, just the first item under Facilities Maintenance, I know that when the, when we shut down, the electric bill, all of the utilities, all of the winter costs. And it went from $10,000 a year up to 85 in '22 and 80 in '23, and it's still 80 in '24. How much of the electricity bill will be covered by the current operator? I thought they were going to be picking up.
So they do pick up the, the money for the function, but the commission pays for it and then they reimburse us back for it. The previous treasure, just because of, you know, previous years and fluctuation and not knowing what may or may not happen, kept the line item in there just as a kind of catch-all.
What could we expect it to be, if not, if not $8,000? Did you talk about the net amount to the commission?
Offset by.
Oh, offset.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm not sure of the offset amount. We never broke it out that way.
What does the contract say about electricity?
They pay the full electricity for the function building.
So is that what they need for that?
It's just a function building, yeah.
You're saying have it off? Are they paying entirely, they will pay the entitlement?
Monthly, yes. After we invoice them.
After what?
After we invoice them. So they don't pay directly to National Grid, you know, we pay National Grid and then they pass back. So they don't pay directly to National Grid, you know, we pay National Grid and then they pass back through an invoice process.
Then this number, as far as the commission's concerned, will be zero?
It could be. The previous, Peter, you should just, we'd like to keep it in just, um, in case the partner walked away or there was problems. This is really our first year with them, so we kept the line item in for another year.
If they occupy the building for a year, I'm sort of labeled with it. If they occupy the building for the year, all of the electricity be paid by them?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Phil, are you offset?
I am.
Mr. Phil.
Yeah, could you, uh, explain the retained earnings used in the revenue line? Provide the context for that? It looks like it's common. I just don't know how much retained earnings there are and, you know, do you always see a quarter of a million dollars in retained earnings on the revenue side of offset? Sure. That's, uh, to balance the logic for the operations. Okay. And, and so that gives how much that line? At this rate, annual rate? I think it said we had about eight hundred thousand, so.
Okay, so three years of that?
Yeah. We would continue spending whatever. Thank you.
From the finance committee, any other questions? Any questions from our members joining us online? Offset, Mr. Phil, are you all set? I do have a follow-up question and I was going to ask you the same thing really as Mr. Keller because if you're, um, you're taking in thirty-five hundred a month, um, the, the costs don't really make a lot of fiscal sense to me. So I wanted a little bit of an understanding of that, how it jumped, how it actually jumped from ten to eighty. I don't understand how that happened. So is that just a number you plugged in there? Or do you actually have invoices or bills from National Grid for the eighty thousand that's plugged into it?
I think we have the bills, but the offset comment that Doug brings up is a great point of why that, that would be all likely to be a lot lower than the thousand, pass-through of, of that, of the invoices to the function.
Right. But I, I also think they've, they've been there, right, for the whole year? Have they been covering the utilities for the year? Because you carry, you put it in actually for last year. I remember seeing that figure last year, thinking that was pretty exorbitant first. They weren't actually running functions there and the tavern hasn't been open. So I'm just wondering how that, where is that eighty thousand dollars? I know the rates went up and everything, but we're on RMLD, so where did that figure come from, from last year? It would make sense if they officially started functions December, December, January, February, and March, but I still don't understand from those four months how it, how it, was that high last year and this year? And if, wouldn't you carry that in as a, a revenue source, the offset in your upper columns here? Because you're not actually paying the eighty thousand, you're getting reimbursed for it. So it doesn't carry over in the revenue, uh, the revenue items either. And I wanted, I just want a little explanation of that because it doesn't make sense the way it's calculated here, why they would, they would be that high? And also, what is the thirty thousand dollar other that's added in there too? If you could explain that one too. Oh, no, there's an other mine for thirty thousand on the bottom there.
Is there some?
I'm looking at the same page, but.
Yeah, no, sure. Um, I think, I think that supplies, but I'm unsure that, um, when I worked with Peter, I mean, who's prior person who's positioned with it, you walk through a bunch of these lines on every line, so I'm unsure on some of these.
It just looks like random, like random numbers on here. So I'm just wondering because it, it takes, if it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cost coming out of the Hillview to cover someone being in there?
Yeah.
That's supposed to be using it for rentals and generating income? I wonder if another, another vendor might have wanted to be in there knowing that they were being covered for those costs? So that's how it reads to me. Taking in thirty-five hundred a month and expend, and the commission is spending a hundred and fifty, maybe a hundred and eighty thousand a year on it, depending on what these line items are. So if we could get a breakdown of that, that would be, that would be good.
Yep.
Um, because that doesn't really make a lot of sense. That, that doesn't really make a lot of sense to me. Why would it be eighty last year if they had no functions there? They weren't even, it doesn't sound like they were operational, um, uh, for that whole year, so. And we just approved their renewal under the basis that they were in operation as a function mall. So we didn't give them a liquor license on that basis, thinking that that, they were up and running. They've been up and running. But, um, I don't have any other questions. If you could just give us more of that, until that would be great.
Yes, sure.
Um, Mr. Keller?
Just, just, just a comment on that. Whatever happens with respect to the revenue offset in this, this thing, you're, you're, you're changing surface. It's kind of a lot, so instead of being three thousand, it could be as much as eighty-three thousand.
And then, uh, retained earnings number would then come down from that?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was right there.
All right, just, just, and it, it looks like, Paul, your, your, your planning every year is, you know, a few hundred to a few thousand dollars going backwards in addition to retained earnings. That probably started a lot more than that.
That means a question.
No, we know you're taking over and this is how it was set up, but it's helpful. These are helpful details for us and we appreciate you. If you see Kevin as a help.
No, Paul, I had to see the question.
Or whatever you have is great to give us that info. Mr. Keller, you all set?
I'm all set.
Who's, I'm sorry, who else?
Is the commission not exempt from sales tax? It's not, and it did not exempt from sales tax.
Is the commission not exempt from sales tax? The Hillview commission, well, they're.
Meaning when lately purchased goods and services, Dan?
Yes, yes, you, uh, carpet sales tax.
So the, we, the carpet sales tax goes to the state? That's the current tax that we have to pay the state, but we, um, when we purchase items, you know, supplies and things like that, we're non-taxed.
It's a rental charge that you've charged a user.
Right, it's the sale tax. The sale tax for the golf carpet.
To that rental to a user. That's what that line, by the way, is. I think that came up last year too. I think it was, I'm guessing. Mr. Miller, you all set? Okay, I have one, one more, last, final. Let's give, let's give social media land a dosage of facts and reality. Does the Hillview commission take care of Ipswich River Park and fix up the skating park? And fix up the slides and fix? Is that an accurate and fair statement that's made its way to the social media realm?
That is not an accurate statement. Um, the land that Ipswich River Park is on is enterprise land, but it's under the care of the Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you. We appreciate the care that you give to our public golf course. It's, you do an amazing job. It's been around fantastically. We wish every success to that vendor. We want to see that tavern open because we know that's, all that's going to be is a revenue producer. And again, that goes back into the Hillview revenue, the Hillview enterprise. That is a self-sustaining fund. It's a specific account that any of the revenues that the Hillview gets go directly into that enterprise to run this public, this beautiful open space public golf course that we have. So they've been able to manage it despite the fact of not having that function and tavern up and running. They've been able to manage it successfully to the benefit of the town for many of the years that we've owned. And like you just mentioned, some of those revenues are actually were utilized to do other acquisitions for the town, like the, the football field that the Hillview Enterprise Fund put forward to buy the, to buy the, uh, football field. It's, uh, the turf field, yes. So before, before anyone thinks that the Enterprise Fund is a fund that we can just reach into and dip into, that's not how it operates. They're actually paying down debt service on the other acquisitions that they've covered as well. So that's part of the line item that's here. But thank you for your management of it and your super-tenance of it. And we're going to get from Parks and Rec, so thank you for clearing up that misinformation that's being publicized.
Misinformation on social media?
In the social media realm. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Parks and Rec is next up, thankfully. We're on, for those of, for my colleagues, it's pitched three hundred and fifty-eight in your budget books. Welcome. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us.
Take it away, Mr. Tilden.
I'm going to wait till she's all set.
Oh, yeah, sure.
We do have a PowerPoint, um, and there is a lot of slides, but I'm going to go through them really quickly because I know you guys have a lot of things on your agenda tonight and, uh.
Do you have it there, Maria?
Information that, uh, I'm going to go through really quickly and I'll just go through the important changes at the end.
Thank you.
So who we are, you know who we are. That's just, um, how it's broken down and what we have. I, this is important, I want to go over this. Um, what we do in recreation, um, I think it's important to know that, uh, how many residents and non-residents are on the registration portal? It just shows, um, how busy, uh, offices and, um, how many registrations they've taken per year. Um, and the, um, different, um, age group of, uh, participants, from preschool, youth adults, and also seniors are starting to get into pickleball, it's been the range. And, um, and we're working on that to satisfy their needs, um, with adding, um, a ball court at IRP when that gets, um, redone. A little picture of some skate, a lot of kids attend. Um, I think it's a great program for the town. Um, I think it helps a lot of families that need to work and, uh, need a place to have their kids to go and have a great time and learn things and, um, train the staff, the recreation staff with Nancy RC, you know, running them direct up. Um, they do a great job and it's well-attended and well-cherished. Parks, you guys already know all this, um, so I'm going to go over this just real quick. Um, but this is kind of a snapshot we do, um, oh, what we take care of and what special town events to be, um, help out on. Um, these are just fields that we maintain, mowing these trash, beating, picking up after dogs, unfortunately. And, um, that's just a snapshot there. Couple of pictures of some of the places. Um, you can see on the top left corner, um, the town day, um, it's well-attended. And then just, um, this big, nice picture of IRP on the, all right. Little pictures and you just, you know. Um, I do want to mention Kids' Spot. Um, this, uh, was built many, many years ago by volunteers. Um, unfortunately, it's seen and stayed. Um, but we are fortunate enough, um, to thank Representative Jones and Senator Taft for securing, um, grants for us. So, um, up to date, we have, uh, fifty thousand dollars we need to spend in this fiscal year, but they've secured another hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're just waiting on the details for the contracts to get that going. Unfortunately, I mean, it's going to be a big project and, um, we'll notify people that, um, that's going to have to be closed for a while. Um, with the Swinset area, we'll be able to keep open, but, uh, all the, uh, above structures are all coming down. Um, so they're going to, it, it'll be closed for a little bit of period of time, but I'll inform everybody about when that's going to happen.
So you're going to rebuild that?
Going to rebuild.
Remove and rebuild it?
Remove, yep, going to rebuild it, remove it, and, um, bring in ADA compliance. Right now, it's not, so, um, for inclusion for, uh, kids with disabilities. Um, is that? I'm not, I mean, um, so this year, we have a lot of, uh, special projects. Again, uh, thanks to, uh, the, uh, money that we got secured from, um, the state, um, the airlocks. Um, the turf field scheduled to be replaced, um, right after school, high school gets out this, uh, this time of spring. Um, it'll probably be like a five to six week project. Um, so that is, that, um, one of the airlocks for, um, replacement of, uh, playground equipment at IRP. It's already scheduled. It was, as of now, it's going to start, um, on April first. And again, all the wooden structures that are at IRP are outdated. Um, they're always in need of repair. Um, so when there's already a plan and design together and all the equipment's been purchased, that's happening at the beginning of, um, April.
But, Mr. Tilden, is there a difference between, uh, resurfacing for a tennis court and a pickleball court? What's the difference?
Well, we're going to resurface the tennis courts of cracks. And then they align it for a tennis, which they can also include lines for pickleball, so it's like a multi-use.
All right. It's a big deal, pickleball. Oh, I know, but I, I was just wondering what the difference is.
One of the towns are doing that now instead of, uh, because you can, uh, put double the amount of pickleball courts in a tennis court just because it's half the size. So they just line it different, so it's, it's more use. We're doing the basketball court, um, one of the, you know, the cracks just more the years, same thing with the hockey rink. Um, and I already mentioned Kids' Spot, that's going to be a big project. Um, besides the, uh, funding that, uh, is put in there from the airlocks, um, Parks and Rec has, um, the committee has, um, voted to, uh, put in money towards that, um, the, uh, retain there. So these are our challenges, just to keep everything, uh, clean, safe, attractive. Um, and, you know, Mother Nature plays a, always plays a hand in it. Last year, we got no rain, uh, spring all the way to the, into fall. Um, there's plenty of work to do. Um, going to continue to, um, hire three cities local college kids. Um, it's, it's, it's important. They, uh, take care of the, uh, the, uh, perp field stuff that keeps, uh, guys busy to be able to concentrate on, um, priorities. You know, it's, um, a lot of challenges again, but it's okay. So the only request, um, that we're making from the change is, um, we're going to, you know, requesting to add a new, um, new parks position. Um, there'll be a DPW main, some maintenance crafts in, we started that position. Um, the reason for the request is, um, all these airlocks are coming in all at once. Um, and it's going to tie up a lot of my time, which, um, I'm usually out there working with my guys, doing all the, uh, daily duties that need to be done. Um, so, uh, we'll be extremely busy and we just want to make sure that we're able to keep up with, uh, our, uh, our job duties and priorities. Also, uh, a DPW guy could, um, most, my guys do a lot of, um, they're to work fully DPW, so they're not necessarily, necessarily with me every day. They have other, um, obligations, uh, snowstorms, water rigs, uh, et cetera. So a lot of the times, they use DPW too, which works out. So basically, we're asking for the new, uh, fifty-three thousand dollars to, that's just a change from last year and with, um, additional, uh, salary adjustments. Okay, if anybody has any questions? If you.
Sean, questions? Mr. Warner?
Um, my machine's locked out, so I can't see any numbers. But what was the revenue that was generated last year by Parks and Rec?
So, for twenty twenty-two, three, I mean, twenty?
Whatever one year you have, yeah.
I don't have twenty, I don't have twenty-twenty-two as the year-end for, uh, final revenue. I mean, as of, as of right, as of December of twenty twenty-three, FY twenty-three, we have one hundred and sixty-six thousand.
How much?
One sixty-six. One sixty-six.
No, he's asking what was the total? What, you mean between all the programs and all the, uh, youth groups and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Just total revenues.
I mean, I don't have a, FY twenty-two, which was a, it was a yearly year. I don't have that on my, I don't have that. If you can get that to your, if you could.
That's, that's fine. Um, and so when you were saying the subsidy, this would be, because I, a lot of your expenses you pay for yourself, you. And so when you were saying the subsidy, this would be, because a lot of your expenses you pay for yourself, you run, correct?
Yes.
So this would be what you're asking the town to subsidize?
Correct.
To support your vote.
Yes.
And can you, for that hire, can you just be a little bit more specific? It's like it's hard to evaluate. So could you be more specific about what the new hire would offer? And I'm kind of confused when you said that sometimes they share their time with the DPW, so I'll try to figure that out a little bit better.
Well, again, with the sometimes, maybe I think we just can be able to get a lot more done if we had another person. It would help. This isn't just, you know, this year. Every year, it seems like we get more and more responsibilities. We get more use on the fields. We get more events. We support different departments. Whether it's bringing chairs over or bringing tables over. It's just, it would benefit the town, I think, to have another person. And my, a lot of my time that I do a lot of hands-on on the job where that time's gonna be taken away to the next year or two anyways.
How much, what percentage of your time right now is hands-on? About, approximately?
I'd say 60, 70%.
Really?
Yes.
You're right, that's a lot. All right, thank you.
You see them up here all the time. The revenue is on 368.
I, my machine says on the block. I think I'm the bigger computer.
It looks like you have, if I'm reading this correctly, 366,000? That's for this fiscal year that we're in this moment. That's what our budget was. Oh, I think I might be not reading it right.
No, I can't.
I have the number.
I can't.
Oh, there we go.
The revenue for '22...
Oh, thank you.
That they took in without the subsidy was $428,000. The retained earnings for '22 were certified at $387,000.
And how's that compared to years past? Can you see that briefly, quickly?
I don't have the, do you have the retained earnings for the previous year?
About $253,000 is the prior year.
And the revenue for the previous year was $394,000.
So it's going up a little bit?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Muller, I'm sorry.
I'll say it. Yes, I'll say it.
And Mrs. Gonzalez, any questions?
Yeah. I'm gonna go back to that position, just to clarify a little bit more. My understanding that that position would be shared between you and the DPW?
Well, right now, both of my guys, they do have, they're kind of shared now, so I wouldn't see any difference. You're obligated to, Snow and I, if there's a snowstorm or something, you know.
So we're over there, we days, we're like...
Yeah, that's how it's always worked. Even when I was, I was always both, like both.
And, and right now, you feel that even with them, you need another person?
Yeah, it would be very helpful.
That's all. I just wanna clarify that. And I, just to note that revenue will be a lot higher from people getting settled.
Just a few other questions?
Yeah. At Benaventino, has there been any discussion of future, like operating a concession space and just a general appearance? I mean, it's a pretty used field. I don't know if that falls under you, but concession area there, but it seems that it's pretty widely used, right? Very popular, a lot of games, you know. I think in any given time, there's four games at a time from, you know, all ages going in and out. And it just, it seems like it's a missed, a missed revenue potential versus when you go to other towns and it's, it's just like, it just seems like, even when I go to, when we go to the football games, right, versus that. So I just feel like anytime, even if it's just a few thousand miss, it's still a few thousand miss.
Yeah. So the, literally, board, they control that, Parks and Rec does. I think because there's a changeover in COVID there, so it might not have been as busy as usual. But they made unbelievable upgrades not that long ago inside, expanded it. They made, bought better equipment, things like that they can serve. I think when COVID hit, it kind of laps back from everything that they can serve and everything like that. And I'm pretty sure they're gonna ramp it up again.
And then could their, IRP, again, same thing. I mean, not, not that you gotta set up a food court, but I just feel they, you know, what's 50 cents out of a pack of 24 at BJ's can be sold for $5 on a 90-degree day. And I'm not saying you want it, but that's just kind of a par for the course. And I just, is there any, is there anything to like just expand those like offerings? Like even if it's a daytime like pop-up and then, you know. I just, I notice it more just because my kids like play sports and were there a lot, but I feel like it just, it's a reoccurring theme of, let me, let me drive down to like fires to go get X number of drinks before practice is over. And I just, again, another, I'm just, you know, my general theme is always finding more revenue.
So the answer to that, we've done that in the past. It's never proven to be successful. We've had staff, you know, kids all weekends and tournaments and stuff like that. Including the cost of utilities to keep it going and all that stuff. It was never profitable. And so it just didn't seem worth the while. Again, when COVID hit and it really shut down and we really didn't, then opened up avenues. We never gave any money off the, you know, refrigerators and all that stuff, utilities, and it just didn't work out. I mean, we still use it for, we use it for storage of food for barbecues when we have them. We still have National Night O. We still use it, like new soccer's allowed to use it for, they have very big tournaments, stuff like that. But on a weekly basis, it really didn't prove to getting revenues. It's a loss.
Ms. Nelson, to the members of the finance committee? Mr. Calvert. Oh, Mrs. Calvert. Mr. Calvert.
Come, come. Read it. Want to say something?
Please.
I have a couple, couple things. One, I don't, maybe I don't have a complete package of it. I don't see a revenue page in here. In far years, it's always, always a revenue issue. What prompted my question is on page 363, under expenses, recreation expenses, you've got youth school age programs going from $13,000 to $28,000. So I expect there is a similar increase in revenue, but without having that here, I don't know what it is. Can you provide that?
Don, there should have been a replacement version. Did you get the new version, Ross?
Does that have it in it?
That has.
I'm working with an old version.
The version that went out just prior to the Saturday meeting?
Okay.
It was originally missing. I did add it.
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you.
I think I'm reading that page right. That looks like your revenues.
No, the work, I don't, I didn't have revenues in the package I was using.
There's revenue.
All right, I will look at it. Won't waste any time. If you could address the subsidy. Actually, last year, if I remember correctly, it was a decision that DPW, a part-time DPW acquisition, that was, that was in part to the rest, and which, if I recollection is correct, that entire cost actually was transferred to DPW. Is that wrong?
Okay. No, we, we just requested $20,000.
368?
Salary for, uh, a...
$20,000 of that person's F R P S, what, work was being done at DPW or was that just a subsidy to Parks and Rec?
To balance it, to balance our budget and, yeah, that reflects the time that it was. There was a reason that we were asking as well, that they don't give much of a time.
All right, and so this year, you're looking for yet another, another person for another, nearly $60,000 to kind of shepherd these new projects. Is that what it is?
Not necessarily, necessarily. I think that my committees, they really asking us to push a sub, so we can get more things done, more projects, more projects done, we can be updated, we can just make sure everything's done better. Sometimes we have to put projects off that we wanna do. There now, if we have another person to assure that we can get everything done. The demand has grown on our Parks and Rec group, maintenance group. We do, we do a lot more of this because there's a lot more use. There's a lot more, there's a lot more beds, some output, you know, things like oil and edge and different functions that come up. We do take care of Ken Park, Penny Turf Field. There's a lot of overseeing, there's things that they have to do, nights clean up after events. So we have a lot more responsibilities added towards growth years. That's, that's basically.
For you, just one more question. I thought in your presentation, we were talking about the airlock funds for, for Kids' Park and other items. That was a why you needed more registrations? Disunderstanding?
No, no, it's just that that's gonna take up a lot of my time because I have to be there and manage it.
So what you would have done?
It's gonna take it away from my responsibilities down here and your, um... And then, I mean, fortunately, we have these great airlocks and grants, but unfortunately, they're all coming at once.
But they'll be done in a year, but this would be a common position?
Yeah, so we figured that, like I said, we, there's a lot more things we do, responsibilities. And if you didn't ask it, it's a good time. It's gonna be needed. We're gonna need all the gold. We need that help so we can make sure that we get all the responsibilities accomplished. Sometimes things just go, more so for, you know, children's safety, but there's other things particularly. My priorities have to sometimes have to switch day to day because of levels of water or things, but things need to be done. And, you know, with the time to be in, and it's seasonal. There's things that will be different seasonal. And there's a lot of work on the board that we have.
And that can be formed with seasonal items?
The seasonals are just like from the end of May and when the kids go back to college. It's tough to hire high school kids because they get out so late and then they're gone. Thank you.
Mrs. Calvert, can you hang on while Ms. Muller just, I think she might be wanting to... I know, that's not the protocol, but I think she might want to help you answer the question. I know, I don't know. Please.
Part of what the committee has discussed for a long time is Marty, because of his work ethic, winds up, anytime they shorten the field, and we've said this for a number of years, when we're losing the true people that we have, that Tom Page thought, we appreciate, it's not, we get 100% of the time. It's 20 or 30-plus percent that definitely is winter items. We normally should be fixing things up in the year. The perfect scenario is if you look at this, this year, and we're going through fixing up three parks or four parks, had we had an extra person and if we had another person, these things should be maintained as we go along. The 91 acres that we have and we take care of, you can look at it, look at it as 91 houses for an acre, or you can look at it as 10 parks with 9 acres. It's not just the fields. Anybody that looks at the fields, and you brought up a perfect example, if you look at the fields, the fields always look great because they're mowed, they're air-ined, and we're taking care of it. That's one of the first things we do because we also collect the used piece that turn around and get back into it. The areas that you'll see that looks old, and you brought up a very good point. If you go down to Little League, anything, any buildings on all of the facilities are under the ownership of Parks and Rec, but they're allowed to be used by the leagues that use it to put money back into it. So when you see if the paint job looks a little shabby, if the roof looks shabby, if the bathrooms, you know, if any problems besides just the field and mowing of the 91 acres, any problems that are there, they don't get taken care of right away. Because if the only two people, Marty being the third that's up there, is the manager, is the director, he should be directing. So that, when he does, if we have extra money, there'll be money sometimes from fundraisers we have, there's money that comes in from LUC putting money into the Central Park. But if you look at the issues, there was one time that when LUC was doing their presentation also for the triads, one of the things, one of the groups that had come up and they said, "It looks a little old." When you down, it doesn't, because the prunings aren't done, if the trees are falling, they need to be fixed. Those should be done, like Marty said, for safety issues. We need the person, extra person, to be able to take care of these things in addition to them to 12 months out of the year that they have to take care of the benches, which we brought up and done. Of the money that we raise to put park benches in, I mean, the LUC and the maintenance is always, the projects are put in by Parks and Rec, that they do it for, for LUCs. So you've got the amount of money coming into it, and if you look at how much we're completing our extra revenue we had to put back into the parks in addition to some of the greens we're getting, these are the things that Marty should be able to do all the time. So it's a constant battle between the amount of time Marty and his group works out there and what the committee is also saying is, listen, you can't extend, expect to overextend everybody volunteering, everybody doing all the fundraisers. We need the people, so we're asking you to look at is that much land is out there that needs to be taken care of? It's not just the big ones that are received, the Central Park, because it's huge. But you go down to any of the other parks that we listed that need to get done, besides the basketball fields. There are buildings for every facility, there is the plaque park, the softball fields. We also have maintenance down at the schools and the hood schools sometimes, and we really, everything that has happened, floor maintenance done at the turf field. But Marty said the amount of patrons who come to get into the park is well over 100,000 to 200,000 people that come into all those parks here when you take the games. So it's great that, you know, apply with and take care of all the fields and everything, but the things that have to get done too, you can't expect every day to say, okay, get the groups together. 40% of the property is open to the public for everyone to come in. We don't charge them anything anytime, or we could say, okay, we're gonna be parking that. The correct way to do it and to run the business is give them the help that they need. And that's why we're asking for the extra person this year to do it. So Marty sometimes can, because he does it all, knows how much is in there all the time and how much is due. But there's only so much you can do, three people, including the park guys.
Yeah, in my opinion, we've grown accustomed, we've grown accustomed to relying upon a very small team to take care of a very large area, as well as the volunteers, as well as the efficiencies of using, you know, summer labor, summer, summer labors or things like that. So we've just grown accustomed to and expecting it to be done. And every time we go to an event, that's the same team's out there doing it, you know, on their, on their time. So I, I understand your position.
We're saying there's nothing we would do at your home, that, like we said, there are 25, these parks are all 25 years old and they can't get overhauled every year because there's not that person continuing to do it.
Well, I believe you some of the funds for that.
Right, exactly. Have you worked within your own budget every year you could do it? So trying to at least get caught up for 25 years, you know, some of the older, those...
We appreciate that input and we, I, I think, I think we, we understand that too. We understand it's a very small team. I think, I think everybody, I think everybody understands it's a very small team. Like I said, in my opinion, we just, we know who the dependable team is, so we just have that expectation it's gonna happen. And there's a, there's a, we understand the request and why you made it. But I do think there's a couple more questions with regard to the request. It really seems to be the one thing you're asking, the only thing you're really asking for here. So let's, let's get back to some committee questions. I have a couple of questions about it as well. So to Mrs. Harrowberg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Mr. Tilton. When you first suggested this $34,000 for additional, I believe you suggested that it was DPW and... I believe you suggested that it was DPW and parks, that it was somewhat of a shared position? And in which case, who's paying for this? Is Parks and Rec paying for the entire position including the DPW? What's, we're a little bit confused on the finance committee because it seems a number of, often on from time to time, there are a number of employees that are on one payroll or the other, but it's not clear where they're actually working. Now, I understand there's a lot of overlap, but I'm not criticizing that. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure that out because there are a bunch of issues concerning benefits, et cetera, potential at the time, and it would be nice to know what's coming out.
So the work, as the, my work is a little bit DPW union, so there, that's how they're.
There isn't DPW, but assigned to Parks and Rec.
Correct.
But if there's other, other responsibilities that they have to, to perform for DPW, they, they have to go do those as well. So if you're asking what budget they come out of, is there an offset from the enterprise, Mr. Gilberto, Ms. Galvin, that covers the DPW cost, or is it just purely paid out of the personnel for DPW?
There's one employee paid for out of DPW, he's the foreman, right? And then there's another craftsman position paid for out of, out of Parks and Recreation. So they're asking for another to be out of Parks and Recreation, but through a subsidy. But you're right, each time that there's, you know, a break, a water break, some other road issue or storm, they're called away.
So basically, the, the Parks and Rec enterprise is covering one individual who not only serves in Parks and Rec, but can also do other functions for the DPW. So they are basically supplementing, not the reverse, it's not the reverse, the enterprise is paying for one, one DPW.
No, one, one part of it because we're, we're paying for a portion of the common maintenance craftsman. And that is, like last year, the town subsidizes, you know, a portion of the salary, no, $20,000 of the salary.
Oh, okay. Mrs. Harrow, go ahead.
Well, it's, it's not really the enterprise, it's the town subsidy to the enterprise, which is somewhat different.
You're right, yes.
And so I wonder what the offset is, if you have a Parks and Rec employee that's suddenly fixing burst water pipes.
What?
I guess that, yeah.
If you suddenly have a Parks and Rec employee that is fixing broken water pipes in a street, remember what's doing DPW?
Yes.
Is there an offset somewhere?
No, but what if not for many years, Parks and Rec pays for that second person? First person is our foreman, paid for by the DPW, the foreman for the Parks and Rec, out of the town budget. Next person retired, is a person that did recreation work. We paid 100% of his salary for many years while he still, we transferred over and did work for DPW, and there's no offset back to us. So when we finally asked for $20,000 two years ago to balance the budget, because the committee said, why would Parks and Rec be paying for a person that goes and works for the DPW and not reimburse for it? That's where we got $20,000 last year. So we're saying, well, that, we should not be paying $55,000 for a person out of the rec budget that works for the DPW and will not reimburse. So we're asking for that $20,000 and the new person, so we give us a third person. We're two of them still swapping back and forth between the town and Parks and Rec.
I would imagine all three would, all three would, if the position was, all, all three would because they would be in the DPW, not, maybe that's why, it's not much of a challenge, it's snow and ice, everybody, all the ends on board, whether it's a, or a project. I would say though, all overtime costs for any of these guys gets paid directly to the DPW budget, not Parks and Rec. Over, yes, overtime.
Right, the overtime is charged appropriately, if it's a parks project, parks pays the overtime. But if it's snow and ice, or it pushes into the overtime hours, then it is charged to DPW.
Oh, yeah, Mrs. Harrow.
That's Mr. Galvin.
No, I, I wasn't sure if you were, I know.
We do what.
I know you do not, I know who that is, I just wanted to know if you were all set with those questions. Because I'm more confused now than I was before.
I am totally confused by it, and I think part of the problem is that historically, Marty is with very closely with the DPW and vice versa, with mowing, plowing, planting days, he's doing all the fine things they do, and, and the line is not clear. Now, ordinarily, it wouldn't be such a big issue, but because Parks and Rec is enterprise party, and because DOR consistently gets after us for the amount of subsidy which is now increasing, is a concern to me, at least, that we, that I clearly understand who's paying what to whom, who's handling the sickbay, who's handling the retirement, who's planning it, yeah. And, and many of the other departments on the municipal side, there are, there are various offsets, and it does not seem to be the case here. And it's not that I don't think they would use the help, it's not that I don't think they're not doing a great job, it's none of those things, it's that this is a little, a little unusual, and I understand some of the reason why it exists this way, but I also think that we should make some.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Calvin.
The question is, oh, I am. Would it be difficult for, for people to, when they're putting their time in, to post their time to different accounts? If they're working on DPW, to charge it there, if they're working on Parks and Rec, charge it there?
We probably could.
That clears, clears up this, one of the whole subsidies which would get it out of here. If they're, if they're really spending $20,000 worth of time in DPW, if the time was reflected there, that you don't have this, this subsidy.
But the DPW, the original foreman is paid for by the town, one person, the foreman, is paid for 100% under the DPW budget. He's the foreman for the Parks and Rec. That was something we put in the DPW before. The second person we have, if we're talking about the $20,000, $20,000 versus $65,000. How many years of Marty did we put that back into the DPW? We've been paying for our recreation for how long?
I'm having a hard time hearing you and a back and forth. If we could just, you know, basically come through the chair. There's questions here that really need to be answered, and a back and forth conversation isn't going to help answer those questions. I, I, I just want to make sure that the questions that get asked get answered. And if there, if we're unclear, Mrs. Galvin has some input that she could provide, and maybe Mr. Gilberto does too. But to say, to, I think we understand what you're saying, Ms. Mullen, about how, how it's been. So your foreman is paid out of the DPW personnel budget, period. That's your, your first person. Your second person may do a combination of back and forth, but is paid out of the enterprise. Or, or reversed out of the enterprise, or just paid out of the enterprise?
Two persons paid out of the enterprise.
Paid out of the enterprise. Overtime for that second person, let's say that second person's doing overtime for parks, their overtime is paid out of the enterprise. Ms. Galvin just explained this, if that person is doing overtime for DPW, that comes out of the DPW personnel budget. This third individual to add to the staffing that you, you requested, you are proposing is going to be a DPW employee, just like your other two members of your team. But you are proposing that that person be funded in part by the enterprise and, I know, Mrs. Harrow is shaking her head.
So it wouldn't be this.
So it's a, it's a, it's the, it comes out of the town's budget now, so we're funding a DPW position, that's what it seems like. You're shaking your heads, yes, you're shaking your head.
It would be, it would be a DPW position assigned to Parks and Rec, like, just like the.
Like the floor, okay.
Just like the floor.
But the enterprise would, would pay itself, correct?
No, we're asking for subsidy.
That's what we're asking to add to the subsidy.
Well, okay, okay, but it's, okay, but it's not going to be out of the DPW here.
No.
It's an increase in the amount of the subsidy.
It's an increase in the question that we're asking for, for the home position.
Yes, okay, all right. Does that make sense? Okay, who else has any questions? Mrs. Harrow, are you all set?
I'm still waiting for the, the answer.
Mr. Calvin, what was your question?
I think what would happen if we did that, if there were days that the person who's funded from Parks and Rec worked for DPW, then we'd also have to take that the days, we have a position fully funded in DPW and they're working a large portion of their time for Parks and Rec, we'd have to do it in the reverse so Parks and Rec could lose in the long run, depending on the split of time.
That's not the worst.
You know, I, I think it would be worth it maybe for them each to keep track of their time, not necessarily make those transfers right away, but watch it for a period of time to really see what percentage of their time they're working for DPW. So that we can get a better idea of what Parks and Rec really, what they're really getting out of these positions.
Transparency in this issue, this DOR issue is real, and as you know, subsidizing an enterprise.
Right.
They don't like it. I'm not saying we don't, we ought to at least know what we're doing. And the, the back and forth here, and who they work for, and how much gets transferred over, and I have no idea of that.
Right.
It would seem to me like it would run like a water enterprise where at the end of the year, the, the staff is calculating how much of their time is spent, you know, for that, the water enterprise purpose. But that doesn't seem like how it.
Well, we're not subsidizing the water enterprise.
Yes, I know.
The difference is the subsidy.
Yes, I understand. Right, but there isn't obviously sufficient staffing in the DPW to have just one, one person assigned over there just for Parks and Rec, it sounds like they're basically having the person share, share both responsibilities. That's what it sounds like, so, but we have to figure out the finance. All right, are you all set? Mr. Calvin, you're all set? Any other Mr. examples?
Just looking at the revenues, trying to understand, it looks like a 9% increase for revenues to set, to go to this offset. Are, does that mean some increased user fees, increased users? Line by line, I can't really make any details, but.
I'm sorry.
24 revenue, you expect that to go up about $30,000? But it looks like it's inconsistent with.
Some FY '24 to FY '23.
FY '24, yes.
So just an increase in user, uh, user fees and recreation registrations that we're getting more intel from because more people are registering for our programs.
And then for about the leagues as well, are we charging more to the leagues?
No, leagues are at the same, but we, during COVID, we didn't have as much registration, and more people are registering for the youth leagues, and we're getting more user fees from that.
Any other questions? Any questions from our colleagues on committee joining us online?
Madam Chair, I don't believe there are any finance committee members participating remotely, just so that you know. If that changes, I'll let you know.
I, I do, I do have a couple of questions. So how, on a, can you, do you have a sense of how much you lose your team person to act in just other DPW functions? Does that happen on a daily basis, a weekly basis, a monthly basis, something? Do you have a sense of that?
It's, it's, it's seasonal, storm related, night and snowstorm, rainstorm, trees down, water breaks out of the debris in them. So I would even say it's more so from fall through the, through the winter, if the time's taken away. Then generally through the spring, through the summer, they're pretty consistent with me.
And then I had a question, which I do not see this, and I, I look for this every year, and I think I've mentioned it to you. Your skate park, it, it has to be rehabbed, it absolutely has to be rehabbed, but I don't see that as a request. That is just as important as a hockey park, or a basketball court, or a pickleball court, or a tennis court. So it's a tiny little area, it's a mess, I have to say, in my opinion, it's a mess. And it needs to really be rehabbed and, you know, made bigger, and the pathway to it needs to be, that's my opinion.
We do have all these projects that we just pull apart at once, so it's kind of difficult to add on more major projects, especially for the season. It is on my dock, dock is to take care of. Keep it safe, have a focal contract that comes in, change the ramps, fix the road as needed. And that'll, that'll take nights of spring anyways. We deal with it, there's another example of where it takes up a lot of time, graffiti, vandalism, it's just, it's crazy. Skate park, we don't get any revenues from it, but everybody expects us to keep it up in the top shape, and kids just don't care and respect it, and someone can't be there monitoring it 24/7. It's just, it stinks, but we, like I said, we have all these other projects on the dock at right now, and that's where our focus is.
I don't know that we get any revenues from swing sets or spider balls or anything, but I think that skate park is just as important. So it's a means of recreation that people participate in. But I understand what you're saying, I would like to see it at some point as a, as a request because if, if that's what it takes. My other question is, how much of your budget expenditure is related to outside vendors that are taking care of these things for you?
Not much, not much, we do a lot of the stuff hands on.
That, that's, so you're doing all of it kind of regular, everyday maintenance?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
On equipment, everything.
Okay, so this individual that you want, it looks like you want a, a maintenance crafts, crafts person there.
Correct.
To be able to work on equipment and things like that.
Absolutely.
So you don't have to go outside to hire an outside vendor for.
We have to be a lot more expensive.
Yes, okay, all right. Okay, thank you. And there, no, I'm sorry, Mrs. Calvin.
Obviously, you need this person. I feel like full time, so I don't understand why it isn't being just a task for Parks and Rec full time. Get rid of the DPW, they don't get sent out, they don't do DPW. Why wouldn't that be your ask?
It, it is my ask to have a full time position, it's just, that's the nature of, even part of the DPW work, I mean, the work in, as maintenance craftsmen, they go in with the snow, they go in while the.
Why does it have to be that way? Why can't we separate someone that just has Parks and Rec?
I, we really think it that way, just because they're all, they're all the same team, same thing. Maybe, I don't feel obligated to go and do the same thing as, as everybody else asks, as I did when I started, you know, as a maintenance craftsman.
Bless you. Good.
Mrs., well, Ms., I think Ms. Mullen wants to actually.
Yes, yes. If I can, to answer the question, the second person we talked about, this is 60, that's all under recreation work. If, I think this. If, I think this makes sense, if that person is under the Proxim Rec budget, but it's considered a, you know, paid money bill. But it's under the Proxim Rec. We pay for our second person, let's say we pay the whole fifty-five, fifteen, whatever thousands. The third person we're asking for, which is, would come under our budget, we're asking you to give us that money and not us pay for it. So we're asking you to give us an extra $59,000. And then I think to answer the question that Mr. Keller had, to keep track of if they have to in the snowstorms, all people are on deck, you have to go over and help. Then we keep track of the hours and we bill it back to DPW. And then it helps me, you know, keeps the record straight, instead of they commit for an enterprise, they keep that straight. So we're asking basically, this person we're asking for, under the recreation budget, for fifty, however much money we're asking, $59,000. And any work that's done, then goes back to the, the DPW reimbursing rec if they take the time. Because recreation budget shouldn't be paid anymore.
Does that, does that?
I don't know, I, I just, maybe I don't understand that, that that's the way it's set up. But it seems to me it should just be a Proxim Rec person doesn't do other things.
Would be great if they could go in and during that time, do all the re, re-creation, anything else that needs to get done. But it seems like if it's that dangerous in the town, when you need all, it's on deck, do they buy the time deck? That's up to probably the DA to see how that works. But we're asking for the money from that person, which is given the Proxim Recreation Department budget.
It, it makes sense that it's a DPW laborer, given the nature of services that that department provides. So it doesn't, it doesn't, we don't have a standalone, your own work, I mean, for, for a laborers spot, a standalone, your own work at the parks.
Yeah, that is why it would make sense, I mean, our guys utilize DPW equipment as well, so for them to be just standalone, you know, they, there's certain licenses and things they need to keep up with.
Okay, that's, I think that's what I was looking for is the buy.
Yeah, so I mean, it just makes sense to keep all the same and have this, you know, reliability purposes as well, you know.
Okay. Okay, I understand.
Mr. Gilberto, is our DPW fully staffed?
No, we have at least one vacancy due to a promotion which we spoke to this evening. And there may be a second, I'm trying to remember off the bat, but there may be a second vacancy as well.
Does anyone else have any question?
I just wanted to say, on behalf of the Commission on Disabilities, we appreciate you making Kids Spot the ADA compliant. It's needed it for a long time and appreciate you working with us, I know that's a new spec that's kind of come up, so appreciate you making that up. Thank you very much.
And I want to say thank you too, because at least in this presentation, it looks like you're also being proactive and soliciting some grant funding to take care of these kind of maintenance obligations that we definitely don't want to fall by the wayside because there, everything is well used by the town. The, because River Park is beautiful, the other parks that we have available for, for all of the different activities. And the, and the, you know, the kids' recreational programs are fantastic. Be great if you had enough staffing to expand to adults, I know you do sometimes do that, but it'd be great for you to, it would be, be great for you to be able to do that as well. But I think what we have to try to sort out with the R budget is this sort of payment mechanism. It might be the reverse that needs to be done with the DPW staff, like somebody said, gets assigned to you and that, you know, maybe the enterprise fund does the opposite and pays more, reimburses it, that's how I would see it. Instead of what Mrs. Carroll was saying is, you know, making a subsidy to your enterprise, that doesn't really seem to make sense, given the fact that the enterprise is supposed to be generated by, you know, those kind of fees or revenue streaks coming in. So it'd be difficult to justify subsidizing another employee if there's not enough of the revenue coming in. But that's not to say that it's not necessary, because we do appreciate that this is a small team, a whole lot, a whole lot of work, a whole lot of work in a community that's helping you with that, to have been some volunteers in place and help each other. Thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Next up, library. Welcome. Thank you. I know, Mrs. Keller does usually keep it to three minutes, it's awesome. Three minutes, Mrs. Keller, let's go.
We can do this.
We need to quiet her.
And you have your assistant director with you, which is, welcome, this is your first budget home go around.
It's my second, my first ever day in the town with a budget meeting.
Oh, oh my word, I don't even remember that.
I'm saved. Want to get my slides? Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, um, it's page three fifty-one. It's page three fifty-one, everyone who was looking at your.
Charlie, do you want to minimize the square on the right hand side there?
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, Ms. Turner, the director, Tyler Nixon, the assistant director. We've been very happy to be here, we'll make it very quick, we have four slides, if you just say yes to everything.
I like it.
So we look to our requests this year in FY twenty-four level, services budget request is $752,257. That number's going to look a little different than you have in your packets because we did remove $6,200, which was a small capital request for water filtration that DPW didn't have funds for that they're able to cover that, we did take that off of our request. Increased contributors, it's a very, it's like a new position that we're asking for, community engagement librarian. This is the sixth year that we have a position for the library, and I will explain it on a separate slide, but we truly, truly do need it, we are asking it again this year. The other things are the new portion, we do the union contract with staff and that is making our, are there. E-content increases, our typical three percent, the subscriptions go up for our electronic subscriptions in our databases and then so we factor that in there. The Nermuth Valley Library Consortium, that's our thirty-sixth library consortium that we are a part of, and they increased their assessment by $1,400 for next year and it's a requirement to go and be in the consortium. And then finally, the Library Association Conference, I have asked, every other year, they have it in a different part of the country, and the town has been very generous. Allowed me to go and it is a really, really great use of time, we've got lots of ideas, lots of connections, lots of free books and swag. So it's very, very useful and appreciate being able to go, come back with great ideas. Next slide, please. Oh, you're not?
I'm driving. Keep moving.
This is just a brack, a brack slide. Next slide, please. Thank you. Just wanted to quickly show that in addition to other things that we do at the library, over two hundred children and teen programs and almost a hundred virtual or in-person programs for adults, we just wanted to show this, we got these statistics from MBLC, and we're just so proud of it. We wanted to point out before COVID, we had our numbers in FY nineteen, and they were great numbers for our town, our population. And then when COVID hit, horse numbers, everything went, everything went down, so overdrive had gone up a little. But here we are, and we're FY twenty-three, and we will be showing a nineteen percent increase in our print circulation in addition to a fifty-two percent increase from before COVID in our overdrive, which are all of our audio books and, and ebooks. So people are definitely using overdrive, but they're definitely still buying the free books, and we're busier than ever. So we're just really excited about this, and we just wanted to throw that up there. This is the position that we are asking for, community engagement librarian. We have been talking a lot about different positions and what is the best, best use, and for many years, we've tried to, and like other departments, we always make do and we always find ways to get things done. But we are at a point now where we really, really, truly feel like we need this position. It is in line with the Select Ward's objectives, to advance an age-friendly community. Our residents expect to see town departments represented at these different events, and we're not able to go, we just do not have the staff. We have four full-time people, nine part-time people, but we are running the library, it's on five different floors, so we have to have staff in place. We have to have four people to stay open, so we are not able to participate in these things, what we really should be doing, you know, outreach and community engagement. So that's one thing that this position would do. And also collaborate with organizations that work with vulnerable populations to improve user experience, whether it's Perkins School for the Blind and what we're here, we're trying to set up accessibility stations in the library, so people can come in and use it if they have trouble seating or other things. So our goal is to have someone who can really be out in the community and be working with people, find out what the needs are, and be able to do that. Another, these one is environmental services, we are asked that regularly, regularly, and we are unable to provide that. And that can see for any that's in short term, unable to get out, or someone who is permanently home. But we get requests for that a lot, and staff is trying to help people and go through their lunge drop something off, but you're not really providing a public service and you kind of do something universally, so it's, it's very important. That's what we're asking from the position. And also we're hoping that this person can research grant writing opportunities, there are lots of opportunities out there for grants. And we just don't have staff, we need time to be able to do that. I think that's all the slides. So those are our slides, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions?
I'll just start out, because the one that's gotten me the most intrigued is the community engagement one. And I guess it's been on the docket for a while, but I've just become more aware of it recently. And so I agree with you after doing contract negotiations, I'm amazed at the amount of volume you do and the effort you put out with the limited amount of staff that you have. I mean, it's just amazing that you can run all the different floors, staff all that and make everything happen. And I have it from inside my home, that you do a fantastic job, because I hear about it all the time. Joyce is a big patron, and every time she tells me how she got things, I'm just amazed that, I didn't know about it, but also that she uses it and other people do as well. And I must say, your trifold down in the front that says Center for Lifelong Learning is a huge, huge slogan as far as I'm concerned. Love that as well.
Thank you.
So the, it's, this position isn't quite clear in my head, but I'll tell you one thing, is we've talked about, I mean, the, the board has worked on, we've defined two new committees, we just did the transportation committee, we're now working on the, reconstituting the energy conservation committee. And the third one that was thrown out was a volunteer committee, which would follow very much in line with the government engagement, because I think that's huge. And I like the areas that you're talking about, where you could, you know, have the committees out there, the gov, you know, and letting people interact. And we don't do that right now. We also don't celebrate our volunteers, which is kind of a mess frankly, you know, because people kind of work in the dark and we don't even know what they're doing and they should be celebrated. So I, I really support that, and I also know, and I don't think this quite fits in with this, but I also know when people are in trouble in our town, they often end up in the food services pantry, and the food services pantry fields, a lot of customer engagement requests that are beyond their scope. So I've interviewed them and I know that that's an issue. So I don't know if that would quite fit inside there, but I know there's a need for this. And I, I think it's a really important thing, I think you're understaffed, I think this type of thing is really good. Would love to have a committee to help that person on the volunteer side, because I think you need more than just one person doing it. I think you could possibly do it without it. And so any way we can make that happen, I think is a great idea.
I appreciate that very much, and I have to say, I mean, I brought up Lillian, who has helped us understand the needs and the volunteer communities and how this could be some kind of clearinghouse as well, this person has their pulse and everything that's happening in the town, and can find out what the needs are, and then work with volunteers or other staff members, or bringing in other organizations to help.
I mean, we almost need a help line, you know, that we don't have. Food pantry is covering it for us, but we're not doing it ourselves, we should be doing it. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
Any other questions from my colleagues? So all set, any questions from the? Oh, I didn't see, I'm sorry, Mr. Stu though.
Would this be a full time, and where would it fall, like, an estimate?
For the, the amount?
Correct.
This is a full time position and we're asking for $56,000 here.
Okay, what tier would that put them on from that new one that was approved, do you have an idea?
Yeah, so this would be, this would be different, so we made the adjustments and made it to one technicians.
Correct.
And this would be a different position altogether, standalone on rec.
Okay, who said Mr. Stu though?
Yes, thank you.
From the finance committee, any questions?
I'll go on there. Yeah, just a comment, I, I often see these positions come up, and they actually come up from many departments as community leaves on folks, whether it's youth services, whether it's elder services, whether it's veteran services in the library. So I'm not sure how creative we can be, I know there's specialties, you know, certainly with the librarian, but how do we combine those positions to have one, you know, one person or, you know, to satisfy a lot of those different outreach positions?
Shared resource. We have talked about that as well, and again, under me, I brought up Lillian, we talk about that a lot and how different things together. And that's part of what this, part of what this would be, we've needed a position for so long for our library to do things in the library as well, can do community engagement, can do homebound delivery, I think that does encompass a lot of other departments' needs as well. But when I was listening to the park and rec DPW kind of share things, that's really difficult to do, and so I don't know if something like that would work. But we are listening to what Lillian says, and we're trying to find a way that this position truly helps the library that we really need, but also picks up a lot of the things that aren't being done, the volunteers and communication and stuff for the, for the town. But it's, it's very hard to take a position and share it among departments because we just run out, run out of time.
Thank you.
All set? To my colleagues from the finance committee that are joining online, any questions? Oh, I have, I have. No questions?
No, no members to my knowledge.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think he's gone there. All right, I do, I do have two questions for you. Can you, Mr. Gilberto, go back to this slide, but the, before, I think it's before this with the position clause? So, yes. The, the extra $5,500 is due to contractual negotiations, not related to this position, correct?
The $50,000?
Right, the $5,500.
That's correct, okay. The union negotiation contract that was renewed.
So, and now, Mr. Gilberto, can you go to the job description or the proposed job? So how much of this, because it seems like you would have to have, I, I understand that the, the services for homebound delivery, definitely the grant writing, even though we have, we have, I thought, budgeted for a grant writer that was already supposed to be working across the board for, for the whole town and all different departments. I think the, what I'm trying to gauge here, and I don't, I don't, I, I think the top, the top paragraph, that, that could just be a regular town position, not necessarily just a library position really. You'd have to see the need for this based on the population that uses the library. And, and that's why I'm trying to, to figure out why you proposed it. Are you, are you having people come in that, I, I'm trying to understand why they, are they coming into you asking you what resources are available? Like Mr. Wallner mentioned the, the food pantry, are, are your patrons asking you where they can go for the food pantry or other town services?
So two, two things, we are definitely an information center, so people do.
Of course, yes.
Absolutely, you can come in asking all of those questions, and I don't want Lillian on the spot, but it's something we've worked toward, what the needs are at the town, and if this position could also help with volunteers being a clearinghouse, something that, that's something that we can do as well as part of what we, I'm not trying to be greedy or selfish, but we need it at the library, but can also be doing certain things that would pick up some of the other things that the town is needing and looking for. And that's something that we've talked about, and I do want to speak to that.
I mean, I, because I, I read this, but I see, you know, maybe only, the only two, the only two provisions that really. the only two provisions that really, or the bottom three really are somewhat would be library services, even though I would expect people to go to the library for information, at least look online at the website or our website. But improvement of overall user experience, managing homebound delivery. It sounds like you cannot get to homebound delivery. That's one that you cannot do.
Correct.
And that the other one that's kind of vital to you is grant writing. But that isn't really being picked up on the position that the town funded last year, the grant writing position that the town funded.
I believe it hasn't been filled, is that correct?
Yeah, we're in the process of filling it, so it has not been picked up by that. It could be, but it has not been yet.
And for the grant writing position that we had funded, can you just remind me, Mr. Gilbert, what was that position funded at?
I believe it was funded at about $80,000, plus or minus.
Okay. I'm just thinking that they seem to be, I'm not so sure how much that is library originally, in other words, versus overall town-related, as far as a new position, and how much that overlaps with what the town already approved for positions that were obviously having a hard time filling, even at a much higher salary, specifically that grant writing position. So I think it's a great concept, and it kind of, it definitely strikes a chord, at least with the select board in terms of what our strategic, it seems to be all-encompassing of our strategic planning efforts. I'm just, I'm just struggling because we, you know, on a, on a good budget year, if we had the extra funds, I don't think it would be a second thought for us perhaps to fund another position for the library, but, you know, we're at a, we're at, we had to get another level service in budget year, because we don't really have the extra funding to do that. So I wish we did. Please.
Just in response to sort of why I put this town need at the library, I think that's some reason that it makes sense to me and potentially our division is that right now, our library is the most walk-in space that we have. It's intergenerational, and it's an information hub librarians by their training and communication experts, and also engagement, because they offer programming. So if we hire someone who has those skills to communicate about what the library is doing and to manage homebound delivery volunteers, those exact skills could potentially benefit all the departments that the library stays connected with in a place where they're going to encounter the public more so than a town hall-based employee. So that's, that's why I love the library hosting, bullet number one.
So I think, yeah, I think, I think it just, as I was saying at the very beginning, I think just the definition of the job needs to be worked on just a little bit more. That's, that's the part, I'm still not 100% with the job description. And so I think that's kind of what maybe you're saying as well, is that it's not 100%, but I think a little bit of extra research, I think that could be improved and modified. But I think it is, I think it is really valuable, and it does fit our strategic plans.
I feel like we have this $86,000-funded position that nobody wants, so maybe, it's not necessarily repurposing the funds, but maybe we could consider shifting that. But we do overall need a grant writer, and we really do need some specific positions, like management of the website and, you know, the management of our, our, our community engagement, the town's community engagement with the public. So maybe there could be some, you know, like Mr. Mills said, some, some cross-position that we can use. We didn't get that position in, we didn't get any applicants. Maybe this would generate some applicants that could, they could help provide those functions for us. It seems like it makes sense, and Mrs. Keller isn't even asking for that money, money bar. So I don't know. But a grant writer in the library. Or use the funding that didn't get used for that to fund that.
I mean, even if you hired a grant writer, and I have checked in with Michael about this, so it sounds like there are some people potentially interested. But even if you did, we have so many needs at grant writers in so many places, it'd be, I believe it's going to be years before they ever get caught up with the backlog. So, you know, having everybody kind of supplement for a while, we'd just, because otherwise, we're just kind of sitting here not taking anything.
No, I understand, but that got funded a year ago. We still don't have a grant writer, so it's just kind of things that are, if we're not going to have that filled, maybe that money should, that was funded.
Be reallocated, yeah.
Reallocated, so they.
Well, I guess, I guess I was under your pressure from Michael that we actually have some potential.
We do. We've had, I believe, two candidates that we're looking at with regard to this. But there are alternatives to it, you know. For example, you know, we've looked at it as a full-time person. Many of our departments have been pretty successful of their own right doing grant writing. So we had some resources to supplement that, and maybe freed resources up to do this that may address the need. I think the time is now to consider those options, and it seems like they're all kind of coming together at once. You know, I have no favorites in terms of the requests, but I know that this is something that's come up over the past, at least six years, that we've looked at and wanted to try to do something about. So, you know, I'm trying to look through to see how can we do that, while being considerate of the fact that we've really tried to establish a whole division, you know, dedicated to public services with multiple departments doing similar things as well. How do we sync all that together? But it seems like the time is now to do that.
Right, and I know when we first talked about that, that grant writing position, it wasn't necessarily a standalone from somebody that was actively engaged on information for the website, managing the website. Even though those really are two distinct functions, but this seems like a blend of that. And it's a lot, it's a, it's a kind of a tall order for someone to do all of these things, so. But like I said, if we didn't, if, maybe that, if one way or the other, that person, they could try, maybe can expand for this function. It seems directly related, or, or not. But if we don't hire that, we don't have a viable candidate put the funding towards it. That's what I think. We should just put the funding towards this, and maybe that, that person who's a librarian will be, have better luck researching and reviewing and soliciting grants on our behalf too. And they don't have to research, they don't have to find them, they know where the information is. So.
We'll look at, we'll look at, the feedback is helpful.
Like a blend or something, you know. Like this, you know, said, blended, you know, so we can get the best of, the best of everything.
So I would add, so if you go back to the job description.
We're having some technical difficulties.
Okay, anyways.
Can you see that one?
Anyways, oh yeah, there you go. If, if it was even more emphasized about coordinating with real volunteers, you know what I mean? Like, that alone would be a lot. I mean, if you pulled in, you know, the secondary school volunteers, and you pulled in this engagement committee, and you pulled in other people, I mean, this one person could have a huge impact just by coordinating with people who want to engage, right? For various reasons.
Various reasons.
So that, to me, would be something I'd want to see as a big bullet on there. And these other things are more add-ons while they're building the, you know, the, building the program. Even the transportation, we talked about transportation, you know, we could be really coordinated with the homebound delivery services, potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah, potentially. Anyways, last comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All set? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Town clerk.
You got one, please. One, there is.
Welcome.
We do want Town clerk, thank you for having me. I will be raised by Rose.
Do you have a PowerPoint?
Yes.
May I, may I load it online, because we can't share.
To the Zoom through that.
Yeah, because those are the typos, so.
They're free.
Have a new raise, always smarter.
Oh. I'll see if I can find it for you.
We'll forgive typos, it's nine.
Yeah.
Half of us can't read it anyway, because we don't have distance glasses.
So that is an interesting spelling. Is it just on that first slide?
Yeah, just.
Okay.
All right, so we just have three slides. So the Town clerk's budget basically fluctuates, as you know, depending on how many elections are in any given fiscal year. So FY '23 funds three elections, and FY '24 funds two elections. So go to the next slide, please. So this is the nuts and bolts, and actually, you will see because FY '24 funds only two elections and actually decreased the budget in the, mainly the election lineup to reflect just two elections versus a three. So the only thing that might go up is the records access of the Town clerk's budget, only because of the New Vote Act has increased mail-in ballots, so which increases postage, you know, office supplies, those types of things. So, next slide, please. And I told you I'm going to give you a break, so this is kind of like a fun fact. So actually, this shows you the turnout of how many voters went to the polls on the state primary versus mail-in ballots. It's almost actually 50/50. But as I said, in terms of the records, slightly goes up. More and more people are doing mail-in ballots because of the convenience of it. I think that's pretty, if you want to go back to the previous slide, please. So I'm not asking for anything, and I've actually reduced my budget. Sold. Not this year, next year.
You're up, you're right.
And that's pretty much it. Any questions, please?
Question?
Yes.
Any questions?
No, it's good. Like a number of 8%.
With the COVID restrictions ending, does that change the mail-in ballot?
No, mail-in ballot is now permanent.
Permanent.
Terms of the new vote.
So it's not early voting ballot, it's mail-in ballot. They get mail to the homes?
Yes, you have to request a mail-in ballot.
You have to request it.
Yeah, the state elections are the only ones that even get post cut, like last year. Doesn't apply to municipal elections. So in-person early voting is not, town elections, municipal elections are not included in person early voting. So what happens is the board of regents would have to have a meeting to vote to opt in to early vote, have in-person early voting, or opt out. So, and if we did have in-person early voting for the town election, we do have funds for that. The thing too is with that is for a town election, as you know, it's a low turnout, right? And people who request a mail-in ballot, they can come into the office anytime, go to the count-up. So there's every opportunity to vote, pretty much, or go to the polls. So for municipal election, you know, it wouldn't be cost-wise or feasible to have an in-person early voting session.
Okay, any other questions from the finance committee?
All set? Thank you.
Can I just make one, Mel?
Yes.
No, you're done.
Tomorrow is a deadline to either obtain or submit town nomination papers for the town election, tomorrow by 5:00. So whether permitting, I have made arrangements with the police department if we are closed, town halls closed. We, they are set up there to obtain town nomination packets at the police department.
Oh, so.
If they ace maybe, if it's closed here in town hall.
Thank you for that.
All right?
That's great. Thanks a lot.
All right, next up is veterans, page 340.
You have 30 seconds.
I have 30 seconds. Now, do you want to share my?
Take what time you have.
I will, yeah, that would probably be the easiest.
Okay.
Three, page 345.
Yeah, I brought all the good stuff up to the top. I was great.
Thank you.
The most important stuff.
I just corrected it on mine. I don't think I corrected it on that one.
Yeah. Oh, good evening, folks. Ah, there we go. I'm going to do, I'm going to kind of do the Marty thing, Marty Chilton thing of veteran services.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, just say next slide, and I'll go.
Next, next slide, please. Here's our staff. Next slide. Okay, I, I like to give full hardcore comparisons. So just to give you an idea how much of an increase we're dealing with. So the claims for chapter 115, which is a state assistance, has actually gone down by two, but we've got more coming on as we speak. But the federal claims, the DA federal claims, that has increased quite a bit. Those have increased by 33 more. So I'm averaging probably three to four claims a week just on the, on the fed side. The markers were 35 for 22, but that was a lot of COVID. We lost a lot of people through COVID, and now we're at 22. And then the tax exemptions were 61, and we just did 67. So that's sat in the climb. Next slide, please. Due to the COVID, which, I wasn't, I didn't realize how many units were over there, but I guess what, we got 800 units going over at Martin's Landing, or something like that? Is that what it is? Well, there's four now, but I heard there was another four?
No, no, it's not that many.
It's a total four?
It ends up being around 500 with the additional total.
Okay, but we're already getting, we're already getting calls in from those folks. So we've actually interviewed quite a few of them. So for either chapter 115 or even the, on the federal assistance side. Next slide, please. We have gone through, for our accomplishments, we've gone through, what, I should say, my assistant, who's gone, Catherine's gone through over 800 archived files right now, because we're electronically putting them up to free up more space in our filing cabinets. It's an ongoing project in coordination with the elder services. We kicked off our first, we call it the, we're actually, excuse me, we're actually calling it the Veteran Wives Group, because it's not just the Gold Star Wives, it's ones that have lost, that are, that are widowed, that are coming to, that are coming into attendance to this. But it's at like an hour or two that we meet with them once a month. So we're doing like the last Tuesday of the month, and the very first meeting, we had 16 in attendance, which was pretty cool. And then the other outreach services we provided recently too was over the Veterans Long Day Weekend, went to the Moose Lodge and did some presentation to them with the informational of state, local, and federal assistance. And as well, recently just went to the library. And although it was a very short amount of people that showed up, and we gave plenty of notice on it, it was only seven that showed up, but I've already got three out of the seven coming to the office, so, so it's working. So, next slide, please. Coordinating additional home care services for a local homebound veteran through the Bedford VA for hospice. Just recently did that one. To date, we've got 87 claims, and it's broken down, five of them were, five of those five were given attendance, and then pensions, and 79 were disability claims. The 2022 dinner, we had the largest in-house, we had 289 people in attendance. Next slide, please. And two, these two really good points that I'd like to point out is the trifold. We just designed a pamphlet. I designed a pamphlet to show all the local, state, and federal services, along with all emergency numbers and our information as well, to present to anybody looking to find out about services we have. And then as well, as everybody knows, 2022, we came, we came up Purple Heart Town. And I'm finalizing the last two sides on 28, because I'm trying my best to avoid the state. So I'm just, I gotta go back to the gentleman that owns the.
Lobster club?
Thank you, the lobster club. So, and see if he'll allow us to put that up. Next slide, please. That's what the pamphlets look like. You can go to the next one. If you can see the middle of it, all, it gives them everything, but I did one side was all state, the other. was all state, the other side is all federal. The next slide. Was there one I missed?
It looks like it stumbled out.
Did I miss? Okay, I must have missed the backside of it. But no, it must be in there, it's probably in there. Can you flip through a couple? Oh, no, you can go back. So anyways, that's it. And then on the backside of it has all the, all the good stuff too.
That's great.
That's where I'm at. I just wanted, oh, we gotta do an informational coffee hours and we're just doing a lot of, providing additional assistance, obviously, and just keeping going on with what we've been doing.
Waiting to the coffee hour.
Excuse me?
Waiting to the coffee hour.
The coffee hour, we're gonna probably coordinate that also with either at the Senior Center, probably, so, you know. And we, we try to just get things out there when they've got something going on and we kind of coordinate with the, even the Moose's court reached out to me and stuff too, so. Another thought mode I, I was mentioning too, when people getting out, when we're talking about the library, just kind of getting out information, the churches are a good place too because they all do bulletins, so. And that's it for me. We are basically level service, the only thing I'm asking is for two hundred dollars for to incorporate the closing allowance for the admin.
And that's contractual, Matt.
But that's contractual.
Okay, great. Any questions?
Can you just go back to that, that trifold, the all the services that were there? Yeah. So you're, on, on this, are you helping them fill out all the applications for all those different things?
She does.
That's like disability, I know, is a huge deal. I know mass health is a huge deal.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how you even do it.
She's a one-stop shop with the veterans.
Don't ask.
I mean, there's attorneys that all they do is mass health.
Even Catherine, then she goes, you've been doing this by yourself. The claims are coming in rows right now.
Can you, I mean, it's, these are such expertise things, do you refer them out, you know, to other people?
I know them all.
People get, people refer to her.
The people, the people, I get, yeah, people, some people are me. Nah, I just really, you know, self-taught, but.
That's a lot.
A lot, a lot of research. A lot, a lot of research involved. And the claims, right now, I'm telling you, they're coming in, they're coming fast and furious right now because you've all heard about the PAC Act. So now with the PAC Act, it was based on, you know, burn pits that the, the military have been encountered as well as can't resume water and that. Well, now they've kind of incorporated into the stateside bases. So any, it's basically anybody that was in, in a toxic environment, you don't even want, we had over seven hundred bases in the states that are being cited as contaminated.
So, so just continue with that thought, if we went to other towns, would we see similar type services provided by the person who sits in there?
Should be, but will you? No.
Okay, so then, secondary question, are we training the person to be the backup for you, your new assistant, to be the backup? Because if you weren't here, it sounds to me like a lot of people would be in the lurch.
Oh, she's, no, she.
If you're talking seventy-nine disability claims, those alone are like six to nine month, each one is six to nine.
Oh, yeah, and that's, and that's, and that's assuming it was, it was approved. Gets denied, we gotta go through an appeal process or a supplemental claim, improve more, more information. But Catherine has picked up immensely, I mean, she is like a crackerjack. She's, she's literally used me as a study, so she knows what she's looking to ask people. We've got a great system going on, so, you know, when the initial intent goes in and then we, they gotta do their documents, we automatically send out emails to them with all their documents, with instructions, how they're gonna do it, we go through it word by word with them.
Okay, I saw, my only concern is that you're doing so much and there's so much volume here. And if other towns aren't doing it, you always have to think about succession and how we're gonna handle that going forward because, I mean, people are gonna go wherever they're gonna get resources, right? And if suddenly that wasn't there, what are we gonna do? And that would be the negative, that would be a real negative.
Yeah, well, you know, and some of them, I mean, there's quite a few of us out there that do these, that'll do the disability claims, but you got others that don't and some that put up kind of a standard sentence, if you will, in, in there when they're filing something instead of the individual telling their actual story. And ninety percent of the time, they're gonna get denied, you know? It's just kind of knowing how to, I guess, part of the, the help of working in the courts and working with an attorney kind of helped me with that.
It helped, yeah, it had to be. All right, anyways, I'm just kind of concerned about future service levels. If you weren't here, how would we handle that?
Oh, eventually, I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna end up getting, yeah.
Or should we be planning on reducing our services so we don't have?
Can't reduce them here, you can't by law. Can't deny somebody by law.
I, I don't, I guess I, well, when we said that, other towns aren't providing these kind of services.
They're, they're, they're supposed to be providing them, but they shouldn't be denying anybody, but I know there are some that don't.
Okay, anyways, it's a concern. It's just a concern, that's all. But I appreciate you, I mean, just three of these would be putting me over the top. Thank you.
All set?
Yep.
Just that, I think you value, I appreciate everything. All set, Mrs. Stone? Any questions from the audience? No, okay. And I agree, thank you for speaking to the veterans community. All right, next is elder services.
I have it on the disk, you read it.
Page three eighty-seven in the, whoop. Three thirty-seven, I'm sorry. Three thirty-seven in the budget, whoop, whoop.
No problem, good job, thanks. I have her, I think she emailed it right.
Do you have mine also?
No, I don't have mine. Are you, are you right after?
Six hundred and forty-eight, AA, fiscal year twenty-four.
Oh. He offers us moral support.
I knew that.
Thank you. His meetings get out earlier than ours, that's what it is. He has, he has.
He has the luxury of going to our meeting.
I'll leave you out. All right.
Yeah.
Want me to sit here?
Are we all set?
Yes.
All right, so.
No problem.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm gonna try to give you a brief snapshot of the Department of Elder Services proposal. If you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. The Senior Center has been bustling over the past several months as new programs continue to be implemented. I'm happy the day attendance has been reaching pre-pandemic levels, which is great. We have meals being served and transportation now offered Monday through Friday. We are reaching capacity at our monthly lunches that have entertainment and some of our exercise classes have also reached capacity. And we're in the process of exploring other alternative locations and towns so we can host the programs at our app capacity as well as run simultaneous programs because, as you know, the Senior Center just has one main room. I think it's important to note the trend in the population of residents as they age in town. The population of those age sixty and older in the year twenty-ten is two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven residents. As to date, we have four thousand two hundred and nine residents that are age sixty and above. The next slide, please. So we have two specific programs that I think capture our services and our current growth trends. The meal and nutrition program as well as our in-town transportation services. So if you take a look at the basic, basic simple graph from, for the meal and nutrition program, last year from January to June of two thousand twenty-two, we served three hundred and thirty-five meals at the Senior Center. For the second half of twenty-two, we served six hundred and ninety-nine meals. Just the past two months of this year, January and February, we have served four hundred and eighty-six meals. So the need is definitely there. And we have just started serving meals five days a week this summer match. So the trend is certainly in need or increasing for this resource. As far as in-town transportation goes, the demands for in-town transportation and an increase in ridership are demonstrated by these numbers. From January to June last year in two thousand twenty-two, we provided one thousand four hundred and eleven rides. The second half of the year, July to December twenty-two, we provided two thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight rides. We continue to see this trend and we are receiving increasing needs and requests for transportation services. We had put a second van on the road that was in the van pool one day a week to accommodate market basket trips to help seniors go to market basket and, and provide an alternative shopping experience than stop and shop in town. There are many requests for the market basket. The next slide, and last slide. So this is a snapshot of our budget. The salaries for the existing staff, the change is eighteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. That increase is due to contractual adjustments as well as a recommended cost of living adjustment and merit increase for the van drivers. We currently have two part-time van drivers. We're also proposing a new shared driver position, a van driver position with the North Reading Public Schools. This would allow us to have a placeholder in the event of the retirement of a current driver and appeal to more applicants if a position does become vacant. We want to continue to provide the transportation services in town that we're currently providing and also have the ability to, to meet the need. Out-of-town transportation also would require a cell phone for the van driver. Right now, we are providing in-town transportation and this is a priority, a priority for the department to meet this need. As of July first, the MBRTA, who provides the ring and ride transportation service, is in the process of making route changes and they're not finalized yet. This is definitely gonna impact the department because we may need to provide rides out-of-town and the in-town services may need to be picked up by the MBRTA. So this is something we want to be proactive about and these routes aren't finalized quite yet. The other services, supplies, and expenses, that just reflects an increase in dues and memberships with the Massachusetts Council on Aging and a motion picture licensing corporation as well as some expected staff training. And the miscellaneous capital for the food warmer request being removed, we really are putting the driver position as a priority and are able to accommodate funding this food warmer through the state-funded formula grant. So that is it. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has.
Questions? Mr. Wallner?
Just comments, I guess. You know, the demographic, we've been talking about it being one out of five. People would be sixty-year-old or, you know, five, ten years ago. I'm saying that it's gonna be two out of five within ten, fifteen years. At twenty-six, twenty-seven percent, we're well on our way. And that's not, not a huge surprise. I mean, I think in Massachusetts, we're probably the fastest-growing senior population in almost any city in the state, outside of three hundred something communities. So, you know, I'm not surprised to see that. I'm delighted to see that the, I'm seeing programming act more active. I'm delighted to see that people are becoming more involved. Where the, where the facility was underutilized and not popular, it's becoming more popular. So we can attribute credit for that because it's a fresh look at this, so thank you, Kim, for doing that. And delighted, I mean, I know the transportation, we have a drop in the service level that we're negotiating through, but I know, I'm delighted that the, the, I think we're doing appointments tonight for the Transportation Committee to work on that and to make that a, you know, a viable thing to answer that because we absolutely mean it. So all I can say is I think we're all coming together at the right time and thank you for what you're doing. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Could you just quickly clarify the driver position? That's a, so you already have a driver? This is?
We have two part-time van drivers. They are retired and share the work week. We put the second van on one day a week, so we have two drivers running simultaneously to provide the in-town transportation needs as well as a market basket trip, and that's within the budget that we have. We anticipate an increase in needs for transportation in town with the ring and ride possibly changing their service area. We may need to accommodate out-of-town transportation to medical appointments going south of Boston and then the ring and ride may have to help us cover in-town transportation. The shared positions, public schools have advertised a part-time split shift since September and have no, no one coming out for, no applicants. The van drivers have paid fourteen, fifteen dollars and forty-five cents an hour. If we shared the position with the school, it would be a full-time, more appealing position. The rate would be a little bit higher, the maximum would be about twenty-one dollars an hour, which rather would do the morning and afternoon runs for the kids. And then midday is when our need is higher, so we would share that position. There is a van drive, or I'm sorry, a transportation driver shortage that's really statewide. Council on Aging and Elder Services typically pay lower rates and just by creating that position and having it as a placeholder, and the amount of our drivers may retire, it would allow us to continue this level of service or at least provide the level of service that we're providing. Thank you.
All set, Ms. Gonzalez?
So my question, it's budget-related but not directly related to yours. Do you, because there's, with the population aging, okay, the way I see it is that not just arranged services, but emergency services typically are called upon more just by virtue of, that's pretty obvious. So do you ever, do you get the sense, or, you know, maybe, this is a conversation we have with chief stats from the fire department, you know, ongoing, it seems like sometimes, but do you feel like you ever get feedback that some, that emergency services are adequate in town or do you, do you have an opinion on whether or not they, they merit like, you know, like an immediate increase? I'm just trying to, you know, we have you here and this, and you deal with the population that would be affected the most, also just because of the proximity of where a lot of residences of that age are to the firehouse. So that's why I'm interested in your opinion.
So I've, this is my fourth month anniversary tomorrow. We might be getting the midnight mark, but, you know, it's definitely this population of residents that we serve heavily rely on emergency services. The feedback that I get in general is very positive with our emergency response as far as, you know, the efficiency and effectiveness. I don't think I've ever had a negative, negative comment, although I have taken this position from us. You know, we do at times need to redirect some calls that come to us that our emergency response should be, you know, these folks should be calling nine-one-one, so we will intervene at that point. And if you need us to call nine-one-one, we will place that call. So we've got a little bit of a trickle there. All right, as far as adequacy, I think our fire department from the feedback that I get just, just wants professionally as rapidly as.
And the reason I ask is to follow Mr. Wallner's statistic about that rise. It's only natural that, I mean, it's just the way of the world. As you get older, there's a lot more that can happen that you need those services. So I feel that although it's not under virtue purview, like, when I get statistics like So I feel that although it's not under virtue purview, like when I get statistics like this, I think right away of how other budgets are going to be affected that, you know, sometimes don't get enough press about. And, and these are not inexpensive positions to fill when I talk about, you know, paramedics and such. I mean, these are, these are, these really affect the budget very heavy as everyone sees, you know, even adding one, you know, for pension and everything, it's a, it's a big deal, you know. So I just feel that, I think that as we, as we reach some of these metrics, I think that should be in the forefront that, you know, if we have just, every year someone gets older, you know, I just, I see it with my clients in my field. I mean, I do wealth management, but you know, I get a lot of those calls of so-and-so ended up here and not, so I just think that we should, we should really have these figures sometimes and I know Mr. Wallner's field is like more in real time, so we can almost, rather than be reactive that all of a sudden because of an aging population, Chief Stats is telling us, you know, we may not, it'd be a lot better if we had, I'd feel a lot better about public safety if I had one more paramedic, maybe try to project out that, well, you know, assuming that X number are getting to a certain age group, if we have some data that shows that services go up when someone hits X, and again, I don't even know if these exist, I think it would just be helpful for me because I, you know, as you've seen with the budget across everything, you know, we, you have to prioritize, right? And usually, public safety, since it gets a sense of urgency, but I feel like if we don't know that that exists, just, you know, and again, because of what you said, we, just like in the budget, we have great public service, uh, public safety here that sometimes even like a staffing can mask that we need more staff because they're that good, like, and that's great, that's what we want, but it's almost that, I just, you can only, you can only do it so, so long before it's like, well, you know, so that, that's why, that's where I was getting at.
I hear what you're saying. I'm a licensed nurse as well and it's the nature of the job to just do the job, you know, if you're in a clinical role. I think that data can be captured and we can be proactive. That's why I felt it's important to show the trend in growth. The number that I gave you today for the 60, person 60 years and older, that's current as of today, but it doesn't reflect the occupancy of the Maritzalean Equality properties. That's still, we're going to have an influx over the next several months. We're receiving several requests from that property in general, just for referrals for services, not in particular emergency services, however, that demonstrates a need. So I'm thrilled that we are having more awareness as to what the senior center has to offer. We are going to do more outreach. I am also being very mindful of the growing needs right now because we've hit capacity at some of the programs. And we don't want to deny services, but we will have to wait for those programs to have safety by providing the programs then. So I'm sure we can capture that data and I could work with, if I have time to do that, I'm sure we can capture the statistics and this is great, you just call her up and she'll just give you, give you a number right away in real time, which is great, but we do need to be proactive because it's a palpable growth right now of that population.
And again, it's more of something that it's important, however, it just, because, and I believe, you may have brought up, because the lead time to get somebody in that position, like a paramedic up and running, six to nine, it takes a while. It's something where even if somehow we came up with the money overnight, it, it doesn't solve the problem. So that's why I'm saying that as that happens, just kind of, if we can be, if we can do our best to be ahead of the curve, because something's perfect.
Right.
You know, but I just, that's what I hold, I've noticed that it's kind of like, you know, sometimes we can be much more reactive, number one, because, well, it's a lot easier for people to pay attention when it's like, yeah, now, now we need this, so somebody find the money versus, well, we don't need it today and it's like, okay, well, then we have to focus on X. So if it's, if it's just front and center a little bit more, I think it would just get a little bit more thought.
Okay. So I'm going to go to my committee members, but I'm going to add in my two cents because this conversation veered off into this direction at the Saturday budget hearing and we did have the presentation there and the chief does present every year those figures of how many calls are responded to and he does explain which areas there might be increased calls at. So that increase in causes, from my understanding of the presentation, not related to elderly people or the rise in elderly people in our community, but basically based on the increase in population in general. And I, I believe we even discussed some statistics about that. So again, before we get into some kind of a, you know, misinformation or misguided discussion here, we have a highly trained, highly responsive public safety team here. They know what they're doing, they know how to do it, they're very responsive to calls that they get. We have a chief that's been proactive year after year after year after year asking us to put more staff on, put more firefighters on. We have year after year after year after year a budget issue here. That's really what needs to be focused in on. We can't afford that, so we have to be realistic about it. But before we get into a non-responsive, there's too many elderly people for the Fire Department, no, that's not accurate, truthful, that's not correct information.
I don't think I was implying that.
I, I'm going to say right now that whatever implication was there is incorrect, no matter what.
I think it was more that I was saying as the need is, not now.
There is a need and, and he's explained that and he shows us the number of calls and he actually mentioned specifically Martin's Landing in Edgewood. So I don't know if you have a calculation of how many over 55s or elderly people are at Edgewood, but it's population in general that we need to, we need to be keeping track of to understand that that growth requires addition of public services and we need to figure out how to generate revenue to pay for that because we don't have enough money right now to pay for all of these asks that we're hearing that seem to be, you know, basic asks, but we don't have the $56,000 or the $20,000, $20,000 that we're at, we're being asked, we just don't have that. So before we get into any kind of discussion of are they not as responsive as they can be because there is an increased elderly population? No, that's not accurate.
That's not, that wasn't my question.
I want to make sure. I'm not going to veer off like we did for 20 minutes at the budget hearing on Saturday. Sorry.
Responsable.
Go ahead.
Okay. I wasn't getting to that. I was saying again, to be even more proactive, not saying we're not being right now, not saying we're not meeting the needs because I know we are, because I just talked to Chief Stats two weeks ago about it. It's more I'm saying that if these statistics on how many more people over 60 are going to be, it is just, it does not take, I don't need to be a medical doctor to know that there could be a future increase. I'm just talking very specific to elder services. I'm not saying we're not meeting those needs. I'm actually trying to highlight what you're saying that I want to get ahead of it and try to figure out how to produce more revenue or budgetary legroom to actually be ahead of the curve, not behind. So I'm actually trying to say exactly what you just said, just in a different way. I'm not saying that they're not adequate now, I'm saying that, you know...
I disagree with you and we can debate this all over, but we got to get, we got to go with the budget. The driver isn't because we have an increased elderly population. That's not the driver. You may have an equal amount of emergency calls for elderly people as you do for people under 10 years old. The driver is the increased population. So some of it centralized and centrally located to the larger complexes that have a larger population of people living there. Martin's Landing happens to be restricted to over 55. So you're not, you're not really talking real data here. The real data is what he explained is with the population increase overall in the community and I feel like this chief has given a spotlight to that issue for us year after year after year. We're at a budget deficit. We, we have to figure out how to generate more revenue to pay for that, so...
I don't think there's a problem with trying even more.
No, I don't think you could say it's because of the elderly population.
I'm not saying it's because of that.
Sounds like you are. And I also don't want you to get into saying that they don't have a good response because we know that they do. So, sounds like, a lot like this discussion that we had Saturday. So we need to get back to budget questions. Some budget, I have some and I want to know if the Finance Committee has any. None? All set? I have some questions. This may be more for either Mr. Gilbert or Ms. Galvin. We have a transportation service that provides school transportation, don't we? Don't we have an outside vendor?
A contractor, yep.
Is there a shortage of transportation vans or services under that contract?
I'm not aware of a shortage of vans. I am aware of at times a struggle to keep the complement of drivers. Not necessarily as bad as other communities, but we, that has been an issue.
So they have a shortage of drivers?
I would say a challenge in maintaining the correct number of drivers. I don't want to say shortage because it's not my contract.
That's why I am challenged with a budget request that has anything to do with supplementing a vendor that we're paying money to provide services to the school. If it's an ask for elder services, I get that. I also don't get asking for a higher wage for this than you do pay your two drivers currently. I don't think that's, that's a fair, I don't think that's a fair thing at all. I understand the need, I understand the request. I don't agree with a shared service in this, in this situation because we have a vendor that we're paying. So we should have a, know how many buses we have and how many drivers we have and we should be going after reducing that to pay for any supplemental need that we have here. That's my, that's my two cents on that. But I understand the ask, I do.
I just want to have a go with Lil.
Yes.
So the schools actually have staff drivers as well who do the local special education transportation with school-owned vehicles? That's the group of staff that we would be supplementing. NRT does transportation for special education out-of-town through a contract and then I think it's Suburban does the bus transportation. So there is a small group of staff drivers and they have had trouble filling a part-time position. We're proposing to merge our part-time need with theirs.
So what you're saying is we don't have an outside vendor that provides our special needs transportation?
We do for out-of-town transportation, that's NRT, but in-town it's school employees.
Okay, but we already have those employees that's filled.
They've had trouble filling a part-time position that's been open this year, but they do exist, the positions exist.
So do you think they've had trouble filling it because it's only part-time or is it the wage related to it?
I think because it's part-time split shift.
Split shift.
They have to work morning and afternoon.
I see, okay. So that's why you think by adding it to this, that might maybe entice someone coming onboard full-time?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
We're not going to be able to fill that position, it was advertised, I believe, in September last year.
Okay.
So it would help meet the need for both departments.
Okay. But it seems to me to be the same timeframe that you're talking about for transportation or...
No, our van runs typically programs on midday. You know, our bulk would be, we would have transportation, they would do the morning bus run, the kids would be dropped off and we would start picking up at 8:30, 9:00 AM, so that's when I'd rather start picking up.
And then my last question for you, for this, since it's a shared service that, but you have put in through elder services, have you put in for the full salary or is this part through yours and the school department's putting part through their budget?
Correct, part through ours and part through the school.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Mrs., all right, Mrs. Herman.
Hi.
Hi.
So it begs the, okay, because it's going to be shared with the schools, the hourly rate would be greater than if the senior center went out and hired their own van driver. And it also begs the question, who will be responsible for the benefits since this now becomes a full-time benefited employee? And the other question I have, and I'm not, I'm not necessarily questioning the need for it, it's just that this has been presented in a way that lets the Finance Committee get nervous. The other piece of it is that it was presented as a page holder in case one of their drivers retired and they needed to replace him. So that says to me, you're paying 20 grand a year, plus benefits maybe, maybe not, for a driver you may or may not be, depending on if one of your two card drivers retires.
Okay. Well, I don't know that you can answer to that, but it's, I don't know that, is it in anticipation of one of your drivers, your part-time drivers leaving, that you proposed this?
Uh, yes, I mean, it could be a potential need, yes, one of the drivers.
Okay. But also the, I never get it right, MRB's?
MBRTA. The bring and ride service is also changing their service routes and that's going to impact us and we're not quite sure how because it's not finalized, but that will impact us as of July 1st.
So in terms of change of route, reducing, reducing the number of rides they provide into our seniors?
Um, yes, they will not provide transportation possibly to medical facilities south of us and that is where most ring and ride riders go. They don't go to April or Lowell, they tend to go into Boston, Arlington, Winchester and we are currently only servicing in town.
So this driver would provide the service for those medical appointments?
Yeah, or, yeah, as the needs arise, yes.
Okay. Mrs. Herman, are you all set?
Yes.
Okay. There's a little more information on it, like proposed.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, any other, are we all set with questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I just wanted to make, because I work with the ring and ride as well, I just wanted to make a comment on that.
Yes.
One of the issues that we have with the ring and ride is they also won't, once they get somebody to their appointment, if they're not out of that appointment by 3 o'clock, they leave that person in Boston.
Wow.
And, 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 wow, like, and drive away. And it's happened to a few of my people.
So what do you do?
The ride is supposed to be between 10 and 1?
Appointment starts.
The appointment, I'm sorry, between 10 and 1, I believe, which is difficult because as you know, if you go into Boston or to any medical appointment, they're not typically taken at your appointment time and then, you know, these drivers take down weight, trying to accommodate the weight. So it's a little bit more of a...
Okay, yeah. Do you need that question answered as to who's covering benefits for the position? Mrs. Herman? If it's full-time, yeah. Okay. You all set? Is anyone else, you're all set? All right, thank you very much for your presentation. Youth Services, don't go too far.
Okay.
Do you have a presentation on that?
Yes, so it's under the same presentation, it's under the, if you're in this drive, it's called AA and it's just under Public Services.
Okay, so I have that one.
Yeah, if you have that saved on your desktop, can I steal back the thing?
Um, yeah.
Okay, thank you. It's the second to last slide is Youth Services.
I hope you all let me know what to find. Thank you all. I know where she is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Lil, Director of Public Services, stepping in today to talk about Youth Services first. The Department of Youth Services for the town of North Reading was established by Town Bylaws after a volunteer group raised funds many years ago and has been going for about 20 years. In 2022, we had a transition in staff. So spring programming was offered both virtual and in-person by Jen Ford in the... In the fall, Amy Luckowicz, who'd been the former Youth Services Director and now works for NRPD, supported a mentoring group so that we would have a continued program while We are currently with a vacancy in that position and Jen Ford is now back this spring running the mentoring program so that the one program continues. We're also scheduled to do a reality fair for high school juniors, offering a financial education simulation day where they will create a budget and see if they can get enough income to pay the bills that they choose depending on how they want to get around, how they want to live, what type of unit. So, those programs continue although we expect, once the department's fully staffed, that it will offer a broader range of programming again. Next slide. So, I'm showing, just like the library, Youth Services has been asking for several years for an additional staff person. They were looking for an assistant who would be, I think, half-time. So, that you'll see the request for salaries was higher the past two years than approved. So, we're proposing a, a shift in how we might like to offer programming in the upcoming fiscal year and that is to keep the, the equivalent full-time salary. But then, rather than requesting a part-time assistant, which would be a staff position, to instead pay for professional services like contract instructors who might come in and facilitate a group as needed, or subs who, if the Youth Services Director is away for a few weeks, you might be able to pay for someone to substitute for programs. And also for trainings that someone could continue with a graduate degree or have like social work supervision from a faculty member.
Oh, thank you, okay. All right, questions from my followers? Any?
Questions from the finance committee? Is anybody awake? All right. It's the smallest department because one person?
Yes. All right. Any, Mrs. Harlemont?
I woke up.
Facilitators for group programs. Are you suggesting that whomever is hired to be Youth Services Director will not be facilitating the ongoing group programs as we have known it entirely and that to some degree, there may be another facilitator? And what, I guess my concern is if you have different people, if you're the same person running, I don't know, basketball every single time, that's great. But if you change facilities on different activities, I'm wondering how that, that microcontinuity affects the kids. And I don't know that that's what you don't mind by all means.
So, the reason that we were thinking of that is because you may have an expertise needed. So, say you do want to offer a support group for kids whose parents are going through divorce. We might not have a social worker or a licensed mental health counselor in the position, but that might be a need that they find they really need to fill. They could hire someone with that license, they could even bring in the agency that offers support groups to do a specific one where the expertise isn't necessarily with the Youth Services Director. It's also something that the committee has pointed to through the years, that when we rely on a single person to offer programs, there's actually less continuity because when that person is sick, the program's canceled or maybe a volunteer can make it. Whereas if they have someone on contract to regularly be a fill-in or an instructor that they work with, they may be able to call in that person and say, I'm going to be away these two weeks, we could be able to cover. So, it, it might allow sort of a more consistent throughout the year presence if you have that extra coverage in the department.
Thank you.
No, Mr. Harlemont?
Any, any estimate about the number of kids you work with throughout the year? Like, is there a, what's your client base look like, just in ballpark?
So, I think on the previous slide, Mike, we knew that we had fifty in both, that's unduplicated youth who were in the virtual and in-person programming last spring. When we do the reality fair, we end up with another hundred thirty on a single day, it's every junior in North Reading High School. And I believe, I'd have to look back at the reports from previous years, but I think it's around two hundred for most years.
Thank you.
You mean for the reality fair?
No, for total engagement.
Is that across middle school and high school?
So, Youth Services has offered programming for kids as little as third grade. They might be recipients of the mentoring program. They work with high schoolers and middle schoolers primarily, but there is some of the low-range as well.
I think, I think as far as that model of providing professional services or mental health, I, I think that, I think that that's not really an appropriate function for this position. I'm glad to hear that Jen is, is back in some capacity, she's phenomenal and, and I love the fact that she's kind of keeping her, keeping near for us. But the school does a tremendous job with counseling and the function really of this individual is to get in there and get an understanding of the landscape and to connect, recognize a youth at risk and connect them up to actually the phenomenal, we have a phenomenal counseling, they have multiple counselors for multiple grades there in addition to their administrative staff that really tends to, you know, I, I know them from my own experience of a child going and making his own appointments with whoever he wants to see over there available, from the principal to the, to the school nurse or whoever. So, they have a phenomenal staff to do these functions, that's qualified to do these functions. But this is really shifting the role from what we understood it to be and who we need to be in that role, the way that, that, the way that basically our first Youth Services Director, Amy tackled it. And she's still here and she's still can mentor someone in that role and she still works hand in hand, she did at least work hand in hand with, with Jen when Jen served in that role. And Jen did the role, Jen performed the role amazingly. So, even despite the obstacles of, you know, the shutdowns and things like that. So, I think that's veering off into a direction that's not really what the role is designed for. And we already have personnel for that. I'd rather like to see it, if you go back to that slide, the ask should be in the salary to be able to generate interest from someone that has kind of a well-rounded background, a history, some sort of a, a history, a resume showing that the person is, you know, involved and has had a long history of, of service, you know, consistent service, you know, with, with positions like this, you know, over a long term, long-term period of time. That's kind of what we would need, you know. I, I think we lucked out with Amy, I really do. Maybe, maybe we lucked out with her, I don't know who was our first director before her, but, but we have these people here, so they can definitely mentor someone that may, may not have the lengthy history or experience that Jen or Amy does. But you should be bringing someone on board that can, can get the benefit of this, well, we at least still have Amy around, I think. But I think you're veering off here into something with this role is supposed to be recognizing, directing, definitely generating, generating, you know, generating the numbers, growing the numbers of students that participate in youth that participate in it, but also directing youth at risk to where they need to be. That's how Amy did it. They needed to be over with some, some, you know, clinician or some, that's how I think Amy did it, at least from my understanding of it as, as, you know, in terms of interacting. They needed a clinician, if they needed help, if they needed some other intervention, there's agencies and personnel in place in the school, in the police department, outside of the police department, and she would bring them to get them help. In addition to trying to get them to have, you know, established peer relationships in the school. This is kind of over, I think that's, I think that's a little bit beyond the role. The role should really be directed towards youth, directly towards youth and not getting some of the mental health counselor through this because they already have fabulous people on staff at the school. I'd rather see that twelve in the six, in the sixty-nine thousand figure or somewhere in between to get someone that has a, a lengthy history working with you, that can grow this role the way it needs to be grown. Mrs. Gonzalez?
I just have a question about the salary request. Did you say that that's combined with the salary and an assistant that they wanted?
Yes, so in fiscal twenty-two and twenty-three, the approved salaries represent one person and the requests represent a person and a twenty hours a week assistant.
Okay, so the salary in twenty-three was fifty-nine?
Yep, and I'm proposing around ten thousand more to fill the position in twenty-four.
So, that ten thousand is not, I don't know, I'd come back to that. That ten thousand is it? You're not asking for sixty-nine to pay for a director?
Sixty-nine thousand is for salaries of town staff.
Yep. It's for a director and then a part-timer? That sort of sounds like it.
I'm not proposing any additional staff, so it would.
Just the director?
Right. It would be using contractors or instructors instead of having a staff person.
So, the twelve thousand would be to use contracted people? But the sixty-nine thousand would be for the director?
For salary, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, Mrs. Gonzalez, are you all set? Yes, Mr. Harlemont?
Just a quick thing, I, I didn't realize that professional day recruited so many kids like that and that's coming up in April, right?
Yes.
I wonder.
You want to come?
Well, I just wrote you, I actually have a webinar that you do, so I can't get on it, but I would normally do that, I would love to do it. But you just told me that that was a huge engagement for kids. So, is it possible to move that up until like September, October? So, that way you don't have a six-month lag of kids not engaged with Youth Services? I mean, I know that sounds logistically hard, but I, I just wonder if there's, we can, because most, otherwise there's six months potentially without doing anything and then they last two months of school before summer vacation, suddenly they're engaged. And I know some will carry over the next year, but it may be too late for us.
So, historically, they offer programs all seasons and a variety of options throughout the week. What you saw reflected for the fall and spring is our low staffing level because we don't have a director currently. That's why right now we're limited to the weekly mentoring and the one reality fair.
Yeah.
But there, we assume there will be programs in the fall, quite a few options.
Okay, all right, got you.
The one reality is a school-sponsored thing where all the juniors participate in it.
Was that again? Sorry.
You, you, it's a, it's a school-sponsored thing where they, all the juniors participate and just go in groups, they go in different groups. It's a portion of their, their regular school day where they go to the fair.
Yeah, I'm just saying, could they put it at the beginning of the year as opposed to at the end of the school year? Because then they would be more engaged, I mean, you know, you said it was thirty versus a hundred. It'd be nice to have them join in, otherwise they're not doing anything. I mean, a lot of these kids are not doing sports, they're not doing other activities. So, a lot of them don't, are not engaged anywhere in the schools other than going to school. So, if you found a way to engage them early in the year, you know, that would be fulfilling their mission.
So, you need a director?
Yeah, right, well, I mean, no, I mean, assuming that you have staffing, right?
And some fun activities.
And, and things to engage in, early.
All right. But all set?
Anyways.
Okay, Mr. Harlemont, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no, I just, just wanted to throw that up, that's all. So, more statement, so you said there's a, like a financial simulation?
Yes.
Of like a real-world like experience? Okay, I think that's great because financial literacy is not taught. We have, I don't want to call it a generation because I think that's too overbearing, but there's a lot of, you know, especially around credit and the ramifications. I think a lot of young adults, you know, especially when they first are like freshmen or sophomores, I mean, they get to college campus and the Discover Card ladies there with like, you know, a hat and, you know, a six-pack of beer they shouldn't have if you sign up for this credit card today only. And I feel like no one understands that those things can come and chase you, ruin your credit, like they can have real things and it seems not to be, I don't, I don't want to say it's not taught, it's just not, there is no, you know, like real-world financial economics that's taught as a prerequisite for like a graduation at any level in the US versus there is in a lot of European countries where if you can't figure out how to explain how a loan works and has to be repaid, you can't graduate high school, you know? So, it's something we just don't, but to be the most capitalist country in the world, we sure don't teach capitalism, which is interesting. So, I think that's great and I don't know if there's a way, once a director's in place to expand that more because, again, something you do where it's not a big deal at eighteen, nineteen, can become a really big deal when all of a sudden, you may not get an apartment because your credit is bad or a job or one of the many things that, you know, we do. So, I think that, no, that, that's great. So, that's something that, you know, I think if that, if that was a focus on, I, I don't know in this professional day what goes on, it's, you know, it seems like it's a good event, but I feel like that, that's something where I would definitely advertise heavier if even possible. And, you know, I know there's a lot of people like myself would be more than happy to introduce even the most basic concepts just because I've seen through clients' kids, I've heard the horror stories. So, it goes on and it happens a lot more because the other thing too is parents are not exactly going on Facebook to tell you about how I just had to bail my kid out of a, you know, a financial situation. It's not, you know, not really a brag, but it does happen more often than is reported. So, thank you.
It's really well, it's really well done and in advance, the students will tell their, I think their civics or some of their court, their, their, their teachers in advance what their, what their desired career goal is. So, they then, you know, they provide them with a sheet then of what their, you know, the basic salary for that is. And then it's organized by the different things that they have to go through in terms of their budgeting. If they need a loan, if they need a second job, if they can afford a job, if it goes, I'm simplifying it, you know, you need to have X amount for retirement and they, and then they go to the retirement table and they go through the compounded interest schedule. It's, it's very well done so that what's sad is when there's someone like a theater person who realizes they're not going to be able to afford to live other than based on other people's philanthropy and they leave. It's a reality fair for a reason.
It is, yeah.
It's a very big reality check for them, but it's, it's very well done and like I said, it's a school-sponsored thing, so they, they, they don't just do it on a whim, they, they pre-plan.
They build up to it.
Every part of it and they completely pre-plan every station of it. Do you need roommates because you can't afford, you're not going to be able to buy a place and you can't afford to rent on your own? So, you're going to have to find three of your friends that you need to have as roommates until you either get a second job or, you know, do whatever to, you know, supplement your income. It's very, very well done, so they, they leave after their, their time there, you know, with all these thoughts about, you know, their, their career path and their, their financial future and how to be financially successful, really well done. So, anyway, I, I'm glad to see that that's come back and I hope we see some invitation, you know, for volunteers for that take. It's a, it's a great day, it's a good, good opportunity. All right, I think we can move on, we still have more budgets to do, right?
We have one more.
Public, oh, Public Services, all right. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
What have we not covered yet?
Well, I'm Lil, Director of Public Services.
Yes.
On the left is the six departments that fall within the Division of Public Services. And I work with most of these folks, talking with the department heads at least weekly, some of them more frequently. On the right, there's some additional activities that I've been involved with and those I think might flex and make these different things over time, but I've been. But I've been working potentially with the Transportation Committee, but gathering a lot of information about transportation since I've arrived. Supporting the Commission on Disabilities with a few projects, like updating their website. I attended the Mobile Home Right Control Board hearings this year and reconvened the CIT Social Services Action Team, which has a lot of those same departments in it, but also the Health Department, the Fire Department, Food Pantry and others. And most recently, I'm involved in conversations with, again, all those departments about what an intergenerational center might need if it had enough space for us all. We can skip this one, but it's a fun slide for the very end, Mike. For me, I'm asking for overall a 1% decrease in the budget. The salary compared with what was proposed in fiscal '23 can come down 1,500 and I would like $150, that's non-salary, I think it reflects like the full allowance or something relatively small. So operating budget, pretty level. The one thing that I'll bring up, and it may be more appropriate for a warrant article, I'm aware, but I'm requesting $60,000 of one-time lending to support an assessment by the Commission on Disabilities and Transportation Committee on resident needs because our last parent transit study was in 2017 and it would be helpful to know where people need to go. And also to support pilot transportation efforts if we need to fund something like Uber or Lyft to get people home from Boston. I think the Transportation Committee will help make decisions about the best way to spend pilot dollars. And keeping in mind too that we are applying for grants whenever they're available, so we may not need to spend that. We've applied for two sources of support already and working on AARP grant request this week as well.
Is that it?
Yeah. All right, two budget line.
Questions?
I'm very well-versed about what she's doing, so delighted with the recommendations and how it's pulling it all together. You know, the $60,000 probably will be a warrant article that we have to sort out. But it's working the way it's supposed to be working, so thank you for filling that role and doing what you're doing.
Questions? Do you have any questions? I answered any questions? No?
Want to show that other West side, I love it. Go back to the grid. That's everyone who you talked to tonight except for CPC with their last year's ask and this year's ask. And overall, the Division wants $211,000 more. What's it for? And the main pieces are listed below.
Good.
The presentation's in the folder, the budget folder, I will be.
And you helped all with all, you participated in all the, but you can tell there's a little bit of the running through, it's a more global service, which is, is very good if we can afford it. Thank you, thank you so much. All right, okay.
Can I just make a comment about budget? It's very brief.
Yes, of course.
We're, we're seeing a change in our demographics, we're seeing the change in the needs that are going on. And I recognize that I'm not sitting, you know, I'm not doing the budget, you're trying to balance out school versus general services. But there is a balancing act that's going on. And, you know, in the past, we've been very good about supporting the schools, and I'm not saying our support should end, but we should also, we should also recognize that the enrollment that they have is flat to, to lower than it's been and that some of the demographics in town are changing. And now they have a lot of fixed costs and they have like new costs, like special needs and things like that. So it's just, I, I'm saying this kind of the town overall is that we're hitting the breaking points on a few things. And we need to be cognizant of the fact that the town is changing and we don't have the money. And some things are, there's going to have to be paid because we're not going to be doing some of the things we want to do. And, you know, at the end of the day, you just don't, we don't have money coming out of where we're, there, there's going to be some payments in places. Again, I'm not sitting doing the budget, so I don't, I'm not aware of everything, but we have to like think about that in a bigger way. It's just my general thoughts, that's it. Thank you.
Well, our next one of business is to review the, review the FY 2024 Revenue and Expense Plan. So that was an interesting segue into this.
There we go.
Mr. Ferro?
Okay. Madam Chair, through you, this is a presentation on the Revenue and Expense Plan as of March 9th, 2023, which was last Thursday, also happens to be the date of our last Financial Planning Team meeting. And I should note that I'm basically putting on a PowerPoint slide information that was in the meeting packet and was reviewed in the Financial Planning Team meeting. Tried to excerpt it in a way that I think and hope will be useful for everybody who's viewing at home. I want to recognize Loriann Galvin, the Acting Finance Director, for her work throughout this budget process, including with the departments that you heard from this evening, the departments you heard from on Saturday and the departments you will hear from in two weeks, as well as on this Revenue and Expense Plan as we work to build the FY 24 budget. So just a note about revenue, showing a little bit of what's going on with our property tax levy. I'll just point your attention to the highlight there for new growth. You see in fiscal year 2023, we had a total new growth number of $1 million, 27,642. It's a combined number both for Martin's Landing and Townwide. We've actually broken it out for 2024 and the years moving forward. And you can see in the allocation there that we are projecting it to be a smaller number townwide. So that is a slight decrease in new growth as construction does slow down, particularly at the Martin's Landing project where we are aware that the pace of construction is, is slowing, even though the project is not yet completed. So that's one area where we're not necessarily seeing the over $1 million growth that we've seen in recent years and that will tie back to some information at the end of the presentation. Some information about state aid. These numbers on the right-hand side represent the numbers that are in the Governor's Proposed Budget. Remains to be seen how things will shake out at the state level, but there was a small increase in Chapter 70 as well as an increase in unrestricted general government aid. I think we've talked at length in this forum that there's been a lot of conversation about the Student Opportunities Act. And while there is a baseline funding number that has gone up, North Reading is not a primary beneficiary of that funding formula. It's intended to help districts that are different than ours. And we knew that at the time it was approved and we're seeing it continue to be reflected in the state numbers that come through. So if we get down to the bottom, you see that there is a, an increase of a little over $100,000 in state aid. So just going to local receipts, these are the money that's coming into the town. The biggest driver of that number is motor vehicle excise. You'll see it's flat on the top line there. The reason for that is because we did increase it in fiscal year '23 compared to fiscal year 2022, trying to be prudent in our projections. I think most people in the room probably have seen their motor vehicle excise bill show up in their mailbox. This is the time of year we're normally mailing them out, so we're monitoring the returns as those bills are being paid. But you can see not a ton of growth in this particular budget line. Some of the construction activity that has driven the licenses and permits is slowing a bit, so right now we have that projected at a, pretty much a level number. Other financing sources, again, most people in the room are familiar. We, we are relying on funding from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to offset our total debt service, our non-exempt debt service appropriation to the tune of just over $1.2 million. And then we're continuing to see the reliance on the $300,000 from Cell Tower. You know, we continue to get payments in from those Cell Tower leases, so that is a continuing funding source. So just showing you the total general fund revenue that we have in the plan, $77,668,721. Let's go to the expenses. Shared fixed costs, these are items that are effectively off the top and affect the amount available for both municipal and school operations. The things I will point you to are the regional school assessments, which we have our projection in there based upon current enrollment and a modest increase in the rate. We have not been issued a formal assessment for either of those districts, so we'll continue to await, await that. And then I'm going to just kind of call your attention to the debt service non-exempt line, that $1,061. That is a number that we're working off of for that stabilization fund transfer that I mentioned a couple of slides ago, along with the little school roof debt service and short-term debt borrowing. And if you go all the way down to the bottom, the PFA Health Insurance Contingency, this is a source of significant strain on the budget for fiscal year 2024. What you see there is a 12.5% increase, that's a blended number. That reflects where we think we would be at with some adjustments to the PFA, but it's a big number. And I do need to say that, you know, we are here in, at least in the administrative end, looking at the potential use of some of those set aside fundings, stabilization fund as well as the payroll deduction account. This model, the, the PFA model was intended to have funding that could be set aside for a rainy day. And the concern is that it is in fact raining in this particular fiscal year. It's, it's sort of the second action that we take. The first is adjusting the accrual. I don't think that's going to do it for this current fiscal year and that's something we're going to have to work through with the Insurance Advisory Committee, but we really need to try to get that number down from the 12.5%. I think this board is well aware, the Finance Committee is well aware, we've been carrying, for a number of years it was 5%. It went to 7.5%, I think maybe six years ago. We upped it to 8.5% last year, still not enough for this current fiscal year. So it's something that we'll be working with and I can't stress enough in concert with the Insurance Advisory Committee, which represents our employees. And then these are allocated fixed costs, they basically come out of the portion of funding for both school and municipal operations. I highlighted school county retirement, I'm not looking to pick on just the schools, it should have been municipal county retirement as well, as we are the line, we are a significant amount of that number. You know, the thing that, that I'll just highlight there is what Madam Chair, I think you mentioned at one point. The regional retirement system is looking to put in place a, an increase in cost of living above the statutory 3% to a 5% increase. And my understanding is that it requires approval from two-thirds of the member communities. It is factored into what you see here because the way they are going to pay for it, they're going to put it, I think it's either three or five years out before it affects the actuarial schedule. But I do want to flag that as something that will come up for discussion at a later point in time. And then again, I have health insurance highlighted there and that's basically the, if you take the, the premium based upon enrollment, you know, we allocate it in this way and it impacts what's available for both school and municipal operations. But if you go to the bottom line, you can see where the story is being told, the $1.1 million increase in these costs. So again, just looking at the overall allocation, take the general fund revenue of $77.6 million, take off the top $10.85 million, $10.885 million and you're left with $66,783, which I will show how it gets allocated here. So in the municipal operations, you see the fixed costs that we have to take out of the town share, total $5.470 million and they include everything from the county retirement to health insurance, those are the big drivers. I did highlight that one on that line there. And then there are some revenues that come in to offset the municipal budget, the trash fees, when we've had a lot of conversation about transferring from ambulance reserves as well to offset the costs in the fire department, continue to carry those as revenue sources to offset the total cost. And when you put it all together, we end up with a total available, middle column, second line, $19,169,277. And trying to present that in a little bit of a different way, the level service request for the town from municipal operations, $19,568,388, showing a present shortfall of just under $400,000. Recurring requests above level services, some of which you heard this evening in the presentation, that's an additional $418,000, it drives up that gap number to over $800,000. And as we had in, I think, a pretty extensive conversation on Saturday morning, the one-time costs associated with some of those above-level service requests is just over $1.4 million. So we, there is significant challenge with regard to balancing to a level service budget and the prioritizing exercise we'll have to go through. We have the additional challenge of multiple repeat requests for services above level services that we'll have to work through on the municipal end. I will touch briefly on the school department budget as well, and I know there was a presentation at tonight's school committee meeting with this information.
Right, our chair has joined, has been sitting in on ours, so he came from his meeting all the way to ours, so thank you for joining us too.
And so, you know, looking at the, you, you see there's a, an allocation of $44.669 million. There are some fixed costs that come off of that and they make available $36,438,179. So that, you see there, there's, that number ends up being 36,438,179 compared to a, and this is not the full school budget request, a modified level service request of $37,768,204. So you see roughly a, a gap of about $1.3-ish million. You know, there were challenges with regard to where we stand in the budget process right now and closing the gap. I'm going to put an additional slide up there that I know we've talked about in previous years and those of you with the Financial Planning Team and in the wastewater meeting have, have seen. But the projections, I even changed the color because people didn't like the yellow, so I made the yellow-red. You see the, you see the trend there and you see in the first couple of years on the far left-hand side, that's fiscal year 2024, 2023 and 2024. And, you know, the, the trend has been, we are able to do small things each year to try to get in balance, but as you look out toward the future, you know, it's very concerning. I just, I want to take a moment to recognize Loriann, who basically looked back over 20 years of history and did her best to project it forward with, in my opinion, conservative projections. This does not, you know, reflect the reality of the changing market. I've had a lot of conversation with folks about inflation and what that might do. The numbers you look at at 20 years, I was talking to Mrs. Sudo the other day, 20 years of relatively good economic history projected forward, any variation in that, you know, the, the numbers skew even, even more wildly. So I just put that up there as some context for the, the conversations that we're having in financial planning and really have been having informally at least for a few years. The next steps, departmental budget hearings will continue on March 27th. The state budget process continues and we expect to have a better understanding of potential state aid at the end of April or beginning of May. We're going to continue to monitor local receipts and make any adjustments after we have three-quarters worth of data. We'll be meeting with the Insurance Advisory Committee on Health Insurance, including the use of potential PFA stabilization funds. And then finally, working with the school department to identify one-time municipal or school costs that could be funded outside of the operating budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Galvin. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the help with this and the graphs, it's really eye-opening for us. Questions? Mike, all right, Mr. Stugel.
So what I'd like to add, Mike, if you go back to that one where we had to replace with the red. Just using the Bureau Labor Statistics, this graph, if we're basing it on inflation where rates were, let's just be generous, the last 20 years is showing an average inflation rate of 3.25 over that period, which the most optimistic analysts on, who are projecting rates, do not believe the next 20 years will be. So again, we're trying to get a better number from our financial advisor for the town for a more realistic of what inflation could look like, you know, because even if it stabilizes to a better number, you know, it doesn't take into account that between last year, this year and the next few years, it's still going to be elevated. I think that unfortunately for us in this room, those red numbers are going to get much worse. You know, even if we assign a value of 4% versus 3.25, that alone, that compounded, that, that's significant. And I think once we get an answer from Hilltop Securities, who, you know, has been helping us just estimate interest rates, you know, I think that it will more highlight where we are. And then also in the Financial Planning Team meeting, some suggested and I agreed that this is also rosy, that it shows that we're good until 2028 because we're not. We're not good by right now. So again, this, this, this shows that because of where we get gap, but again, it's something where once we edit it- once we edit it for more real-time information, not historical, you know, past performance is not a, you know, an indication of future results, probably heard that maybe today if you talk to any financial professional. It, you know, I think it's gonna give us more of a reality that, you know, we can't kick the can to twenty-twenty-eight, you know, we're probably, if we're lucky, we can kick the can to next year, and that's also with some, you know, what I would call financial gymnastics, that the financial planning team in town has done now for, it seems, four or five years before even my tenure. So this is something where, you know, so, thank you, Trevor, I just wanted to add some context behind this slide.
We always have, I mean, that's the whole purpose of that, the financial planning team, is to kind of put everybody's heads together, because schools have been fabulous working with us, trying to close those gaps, at least in my experience with schools. But it is, it is a daunting task, and this year no different than the previous few years with regards to the gap, so.
Questions on, by Angela, Mr. Salvo?
What rate of inflation is this chart based on?
So I just calculated, you know, and again, I don't even know if that's, if you're just going back twenty years, and I'm not even saying this chart, if this chart was just based on what I just got from the Bureau Labor Statistics, right, if we were to, if you just asked me what a dollar did over the last twenty years, it went up about sixty-five percent, so three-and-a-quarter over twenty. And I'm saying that this, if it's based on historical pattern, correct, did you use, what did you use as your metric?
Well, for town and school, we used two-and-a-half percent, only because of approximately half, and then for fixed costs, we used actuals, so I think it averaged to be like four-point-six or four-point-eight.
So then with the averages?
Of the fixed costs.
Actually, we're pretty close to that with the averages. So that's why I'm saying that it's not, and it's, it's just, again, it's based on historical, not projected, which is, it's the issue, no one can really project, but I think at this point, there's not many first-year economists who would tell you that inflation's gonna run hotter than three-and-a-quarter for a while, okay, barring Tomo, yeah.
Mr. Salvo?
No, that's, specifically the chart I brought up two weeks ago, this is exactly, I think, what's important, see?
Thank you for that.
All right, any other questions from the planning team? Okay, okay, thank you. We'll keep working on it. Next over business is a discussion of the American Rescue Act plan funding, Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item has been brought up at the request of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, Mr. Keller is here this evening, looking for some guidance as to whether, you know, what our intention is with regard to the ARPA funding, and whether or not we would consider making the ARPA funding available to support capital projects. And there was a conversation that was held at the Financial Planning Team meeting about that very topic in advance of tonight's discussion. We discussed, you know, the potential for the ARPA funding being utilized to reduce the impact and cost of the wastewater projects. That's something that I can't say that necessarily I've been advocating for, but I've been kind of approaching it that, let's see how that project works itself out. I think the feedback from the majority of the Financial Planning Team was that that project, the wastewater project ought to stand on its own, and that we shouldn't tie up the ARPA funding while going through that process, because there are already a number of other needs that are here already that we know of from a capital or other standpoint. And so I think, my, Steve, Mr. Keller is here, but I think what we're looking for in the committee, in the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, is, you know, could we, could we look to utilize, you know, a portion of that funding, try to achieve some of our goals for capital, particularly for the larger capital projects.
Do you want to add anything else, Mr. Keller?
There are, yes, there are a couple of, two or three big projects coming down the line that are going to be very difficult to do. One is the culvert repair on Chestnut Street, which we've got a request in for some early money this year, but I think the total bill could be somewhere around three million dollars to actually do it. It needs to be done. We've got a bridge, the bridge on Park Street across from Sonic Lodge, we've put some money into that, study into that. We have got the availability of getting five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the state, but we would still need, I think, another seven-hundred thousand, if I'm not mistaken, to get that done. I think it's a million-two is the total cost, so we still need seven-hundred thousand for that. And I think, and there may be others, but thinking of big ones, the other big one is we've talked about the, bring the municipal buildings and the bachelor school into the wastewater treatment plant at the middle high school. That's, the last number I saw on that was about two million dollars. So there are, in addition to roads and trucks and everything else that comes down the list of, you know, five to ten million dollars a year of things that need to be done, those are the ones that are just very big, and would, if we did any one of them in a year, would probably pretty much wipe out our bonding capacity to do much else in the capital program. That was our reason in thinking that this made sense to, let's get those things done and off the table. We've got infrastructure money from the federal government, saving it for the sewer project that's to go forward, reducing that by four or five million dollars is gonna have a fairly insignificant impact on the total taxpayer cost of that project. Whereas if we did that, then we probably wouldn't be able to do any of these projects, or we would do them and not do a lot of other things. So we see this as a one-time opportunity to get some needed big projects done without completely stripping the capital improvement plan from the process for the next two, three, or four, five years. So that was our thinking, that let's get, let's get these things done and try to keep the program going, programs working, I think fairly well, in producing the effects that we need of increasing the quality of the roads, keeping our various fleets as up-to-date as we can, and putting money into buildings where it needs to be put in to preserve the buildings. So that's my pitch for it.
Mr. Keller, you are proposing that the balance of, Mike, Mr. Gilbert, what is the balance of ARPA funds?
Roughly four-point-five million dollars.
So it's something you're proposing to have the ARPA funds, the balance of ARPA funds be made available for this year's capital improvement projects?
For the major projects, not for the, what we would normally, of the major, and it's not enough to do, all three that I mentioned, but it might take care of two of them.
I don't know if my colleagues actually wanna, I mean, there's no vote, but in a way, I think it's just on the agenda for our consideration, we're certainly short a member as well this evening, but, okay, Mr. Gilbert.
Not to prolong the conversation, I happen to be, I think, the minority of this opinion, but I'm certainly open to allocating funding towards the capital projects, because there are so many of them, there's such a large number. I do think it's important that we consider whether holding some of that money to stabilize our revenue stream in the future fiscal year, which is an allowable use, is worth considering. I know that utilizing one-time funds for recurring costs is not something that we look to do, but that is an allowable use, and I am, you saw the graph, you see what's happening in the current, the next few fiscal years. It might be something worth considering rather than putting it all into capital, I just put that as food for thought as to what my approach might be. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Gilbert, that is money that is in our coffers, so to speak, it's in our, it's in our coffers now, and there's no use-or-lose timeframe, frame attendant to that, is there?
There is a timeframe, we need to obligate it by December of twenty-twenty-four, and we have until December of twenty-twenty-six to spend it.
Okay, and, Mr. Davis, Earl.
I think one of the capital committees' concerns is that when we first looked at bringing all the municipal buildings in the center of town up to the wastewater plant with the high school, the project was a million dollars. The next year, the estimates were a million-five. Ten months ago, the estimates were two million. All of these projects, which have to be done, they're not like, wouldn't-it-be-nice projects, are not gonna get cheaper to do, and we're not gonna have the money to do much else if we do, if we do even half of them, just saying.
This is a reality, so, but, I, okay, Mr. Gilbert.
Scott, just, I just, just.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, just briefly, yeah, so it's four-point-five million, you're right, not all three will be done. Is the sewer one, would that, would that reduce any of our operational costs, I'm sorry, be connecting the fire station, police station to the batch, to the high school?
Reduce what costs? It would coordinate the fact that you may have to replace septic systems in four or five buildings.
Okay.
And that's when you're selling point for twenty-eight.
I'm sorry, I didn't miss the last.
It's one of the big selling points, what people want is.
I didn't know if you knew something else besides that, okay. I'm trying to understand, like, of the three, which you would, you know, like, you're gonna have to leave one off, right?
Let's not talk over.
That's the gap, that's the up to which.
Please, one at a time, please, one at a time, so.
Okay, I'll express, I'll just express it all, and you can come. Is that of the three, one of these isn't gonna get done, because you don't have five-point-five million. So you just list about four-point, you just listed out five-point-five million dollars worth of cost, and we have four-point-five million, so one of these three is not gonna get done using the ARPA funds. I believe that the ARPA funds should be used for these type of projects, I don't think it should be used to balance the budget, I just don't believe that. So I don't think it should be used to balance the budget. I think whenever I, in my own personal life, whenever money has dropped out of the sky, when I've used it for important things, I've never regretted that decision, as opposed to just spending it, you know, for different reasons. So those are just my only two concerns. And if, the reason why I was asking about connecting the fire and the police and all that together, is if that provides an operational benefit, that would go to the top of my list, that's, that was my point. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Buckley?
Grab a mic here, shall I incident you for a moment? Could. Just.
I'll just say, to me, it's a two-step process, or a two-step decision. The first one is, what we were talking about, finance planning, was should it be used for the sewer, or should it be used for something else? And so I think, I don't think it should be used for the sewer, I don't think, I don't think four-point-five million dollars on the project, the sewer project, will have any, it won't have any indent on whether somebody votes for it or doesn't vote for it. And so as, you know, a lot of people said there's other needs here, so I think step number one is, no, it shouldn't be used for the sewer project. Then as to the fight about what it should be used for, I don't know, I think there, I don't know if it's all or nothing either way, but, you know, I agree with Mr. Gilbert, it is a proper use for, you know, revenue replacement, and so, again, there are some needs that have been created through the pandemic that might not be forever needs as well, that could be, you know, sub, you know, subsidized by some of it, but I also think there's a lot of capital projects that need to be done as well. And so I don't have an answer as to the second part of it, but I think the first part of it of, should it be sewer or not, I think the answer is no on that, because not a single person is gonna vote or not vote for it, whether that four-point-five is in there or not. So that's just my thoughts in what I addressed at the Finance Planning Team meeting.
If I wasn't clear, I agree with you.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry if I wasn't clear.
Okay, Mr. Sturgill.
I agree, Mr. Buckley, on that first point, that for a project that size, the four-point-five is not, it's just, yeah, I don't see it, I don't think it's a proper use anyway, just because it's just, I think there's other approaches. But also, I do agree that I'd rather see it for individual project, not current expenses, more because if we do that, all we're doing, again, if you bring up your chart, is kicking the can down the road, again. It's a short-term fix, the community's gonna think that we have more money than we really do, and now all it's gonna do is make the conversation harder, when it's like, oh, yeah, we kinda had this money that made it, you know, that we closed the gaps a couple of years, but that was one-time money, right? So I think that it should be used for something that we get, whatever, that, now, that is not a discussion for tonight, but it is, it's, but, yeah, I agree that it should be for specific projects that have a start and end, and we get something out of it tangible, long-term, and that we just, I mean, we have to meet the revenue challenge head-on on the current account, on the current expenses. And I just feel that, you know, in a way, all the extra federal and state funding, I think that a lot of communities across this country have the service, as you're seeing one by one, thinking they had a lot more money than they did. Because now, you know, there's no replenishment, once you use it, it's like, yeah, you're not, you're not getting another check from daddy, now you need to go get a job. And that's what I feel, so that's why I feel like that rather than use it for, to balance the budget maybe for FY twenty-twenty-four, and then FY twenty-twenty-five, and say, oh, well, maybe it'll buy us some time to come up with some revenue, one way or the other, I, you know, that's just my opinion, that I'd rather see it on a tangible, because there is many projects even in capital, I don't know, again, there's rules what you can use it for, but I feel like we're about to go through a ranking, and there's not, I mean, there's just not enough money to do a lot of important things, so it just, I'd rather, it's kind of the snowball effect, you check off a lot of small things, you gain momentum, and then you can build on bigger things, you know, that's kind of how I'm looking at it, so, thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
I am in agreement with not using it for sewer, also in agreement with not using it to balance. I would like to see it used for capital projects, but I personally would like to see Chestnut and both ends of Central taken care of. That would be my wish list, because we're just seeing, if we went back to that study that we did on those intersections, the amount of accidents we've seen is increased by far, so that would be on my wish list, if we were going to do it.
I'm in complete disagreement with my colleagues, and as well as your presentation, as well as your presentation. I think the ask right now, in terms of what we're putting for, which is a sewer project, is wrong timing, in my opinion, and that we should be holding on to these funds till we see what the town wants with respect to a sewer project, where some of this can be used to pay some of that portion down. I'm totally disagreeing with the view of not using those funds for that incredibly important project for the town. I disagree with the use of the funds for these particular projects, because of the ranking system that's in place, where these may not rise to the top, and then we've said, okay, use the ARPA funds for these capital improvements projects. And in the ranking system, these three particular projects, one of which is not a need, is not a necessity, like I believe the sewer project is, or like I believe some of the budget asks are, I just think that we don't, we don't need to focus on those right now, nor should we spend the ARPA money. We see the great fiscal circumstance that we're in, we have some asks that have been presented to us that are a good use of, some one-time expenditure, not the least of which is, someone that can solicit grants for the town, we have a need for that, we haven't filled that need. So those one-time uses of ARPA for our operational budget, I think would go a long way, maybe pay for themselves in the long run. We had this presentation with the budget on the additional need for firefighters, which we did here, once we, you know, pay the one-time training costs, and perhaps maybe bridge the gap in the budget for their one-time to pay to bring on board, they'll generate revenue through the annuals fund to pay for themselves, we had that presentation, so I don't necessarily think, I am a minority, together with Mr. Gilbert, that perhaps we need to save some of that, or be careful about the expenditure of putting it on capital improvements projects that may never even be done. of putting it on capital improvements projects that may never even be done, much like this, much like the roadway project that, you know, was in terms, I know you're addressing that in this one, and we're going to talk about it in a minute, but I'm in disagreement.
I just want a point of clarification on, on the ranking system. For, for those who don't know, the capital committee will rank all of the projects and then make a recommendation to this board of what we think should be done. What we would do is, if, if the ARPA, to the extent the ARPA money is available, that would be applied to the projects, one of those or more of those three projects, so they'd be taken off the table with respect to the ranking. They would have, they would be funded, much as if we got a grant from the state for something. We then take that off the table. It's funded, it's not something that we need to consider within the ranking for the allocation of capital funds for this year. Okay, so it's not going to be in competition with roads and trucks and computers and any of that stuff. Okay? It'll be that, if we had $2 million, then we would pick $2 million against one of those capital projects or some combination thereof, and that would, that would, that, that would be funded then. That would be, we would fund the, the water, the treatment in downtown. Or we would fund the $700,000 that we need for the, the Park Street Bridge. Or if we had $3 million, we would fund the culvert on, on, on Chestnut Street. But then those would not be part of the ranking, they're, they're done. Okay, so just, it, there's no competition for that with respect to those funds. They just would, we, we wouldn't even be considering them with respect to the projects that we would be recommending to be funded by new bonding or from the capital stabilization.
I understand, but I, again, oppose to that at this present time.
I'm not, I'm not trying to sway you, I'm just trying to clarify.
Oh, no, I appreciate that, but that was my point. I just don't, I don't think it's his point, and it should be this, but, and Mrs. [inaudible]. You're going to get the last word in on this.
No, I just want to say that we have to be very careful when we talk about ARPA funds, and it can be what, what, what you currently feel it should be used for any number of other people, but it should definitely not be used for reoccurring, reoccurring stuff. For example, you had mentioned using it to fund a grant rider. That's reoccurring. You're going to do next year when you don't have the ARPA funds to help you with that salary. So I just think we have to be very careful, the same way we do with free cash, and not using it for reoccurring incidents. That's it.
I'm going to let you keep the last word, even though I've got a response to that, but I'm not going to. We're going to move on, because I know you're here an hour late, and I just realized, we actually have a change of manager that's sitting here, so.
We're bringing up.
Should we, is it all right if we bring change of manager up now? Because I think it's going to be a two-minute thing here.
Yes, please.
You're sitting here, and I was wondering why you were here, so come on up to the table, and, okay. I should have called you maybe two hours ago? Well, we couldn't have, and we talked about.
Don't ask him to vote on that.
Don't change your manager ever again. Welcome, welcome. Give us your names for the.
I, Dave Lilic, president of Thompson Country Club.
And Brittany Wells, who would have been in Thompson Country Club. All right, just give us a brief presentation of your request here.
So we're asking for a change in the, the manager name on the licenses for the, for the, the operation in the, in the grill room, as well as the snacks check that we have on, on premises. So we had a, we had a change in, in the operation this past year. So Brittany is just coming on with us in, as of about two or three weeks ago, so, but she will be the point person going forward for this coming year, and hopefully, hopefully we're not back next year. No offense to the long meeting. But, yeah, so that's the request, just a, a change in the, in the manager role.
Okay. Questions? Any questions?
Just a comment, I, I saw that you would tip certified.
Yes, correction. Anything else? Pretty, pretty straightforward, right? Okay.
What's the, what's the, did I get a copy of the second page or something? Page two, so I see this, all alcohol, then multiple.
Yep, that's correct. Go to the next page. That's a renew, should be a renewal of a seasonal license, a different trailer, there's four of those.
Should I wait on that?
Yeah.
Just these two?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right.
I'm looking at this, like, feel this bigger.
Ready? So, two, two motions. Madam Chair, I move to approve a change of manager for the seasonal club, all alcohol license for Thompson Club Incorporated, TCC Grill, two midiron drive, from Mario Ruiz to Brittany Wells. Second.
Motion by Mr. [inaudible]. Second by Mr. [inaudible]. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to approve a change of manager for the seasonal club, wine and malt license for Thompson Club Incorporated Pro Shop, two A midiron drive, Mario Ruiz to Brittany Wells.
Second.
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. [inaudible].
We're so used to Mr. O'Leary just seconding everything.
Second by Mr. [inaudible]. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry you waited.
Thank you.
You're here on the roadway project.
Now you know everything you need to know.
This is our life.
All right. Are we doing one more for Hillview? Any more of those that we can get out of the way now, since you got the?
Um, yeah. Well, we're on to licensing.
We'll skip the various intersection.
Well, I know, but we're going to get back to that. But do you have the vote on the other ones? Because those are pretty difficult.
Yeah, I can, I mean, they're licensing, you ready to go?
Yeah, because we're on to that, and we're going to.
Okay. So Madam Chair, I move to renew the seasonal club, wine and malt beverages license for Thompson Club Incorporated, doing business as Pro Shop, two A midiron drive, to expire November 30, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Second.
Motion by Mr. [inaudible]. Second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Didn't we just do that one?
Did you read the same one? Yeah.
No, it was different.
Two locations.
It was snacks.
Yeah, one's all, one's all alcohol and one's wine and beer. Okay. Wine and malt. I know, I had to look at it myself.
By Mr. [inaudible]. Second by, that was our deliberation.
That was your discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to, I re, I move to renew the common victory, okay, hold on. Madam Chair, I move to renew, I don't know, I'm going to suck, the common victory license for Thompson Club Incorporated, doing business as TCC Grill, two midiron drive, to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Motion by Mr. [inaudible]. Second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Didn't we just do that one?
Did you read the same one? Yeah?
No, it was different.
It's two locations.
It was snacks.
Yeah, one's all, one's all alcohol and one's wine and beer. Okay. Wine and malt. I know, I had to look at it myself.
By Mr. [inaudible]. Second by, that was our deliberation.
That was your discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to, I re, I move to renew the common victory, okay, hold on. Madam Chair, I move to renew, I don't know, I'm going to suck, the common victory license for Thompson Club Incorporated, doing business as TCC Grill, two midiron drive, to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Motion by Mr. [inaudible]. Second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to renew the general, on-premises seasonal wine and malt beverage license for golf facilities management incorporated, doing business as Hillview Snack Bar, to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Motion by Mr. [inaudible]. Second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to renew the common victory license for golf facilities management incorporated, doing business as Hillview Snack Bar, to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Motion by Mr. [inaudible]. Second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Madam. Madam Chair, I move to renew, renew the transient vendor license for the sale of flowers, Christmas trees LLC at 226 Main Street for Robert Connors, 58 Wyman Street, Wolvere, Mass., to expire December 31, 2023, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second. Motion by Mr. [inaudible]. Second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. That's it for.
All set, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Kellinger, are you here for the update on the roadway projects? Or is that something Mr. Gilberto has got to take over?
I have some comments with regard to the intersections. If you'll indulge me, I know the hour's late.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I know the hour's late, but the issue is very important.
Yes.
As we've all discussed. I'm going to read something I prepared, because I hopefully will catch all the points that I think are relevant. On, on March 3rd, a North Reading resident lost her life in an automobile accident at the intersection of Park and Central Streets. She and her family are in all of our thoughts and prayers. And while the circumstances of the accident remain under investigation, and it's unclear if anything related to the intersection itself caused or contributed to the accident, I think this accident has increased all of our focus on the issue of intersection safety. And I know multiple board members have raised this issue over the past three years, probably. Board members have expressed concerns regarding intersections in town in previous meetings, and wanted to take this opportunity to provide the board and the community an update. For the past few years, we have been planning for potential improvements at four intersections, Havre and Chestnut Streets, Park and Central Streets, North and Central Streets, and Park and Concord Streets. The Select Board received a report on the issues with and potential improvements to each of these intersections in late 2021. At the time, Havre and Chestnut Street was identified as the first priority, in part because it was potentially eligible for state funding. These intersections were each submitted to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for consideration in the fiscal year 2023 capital planning process. As a result of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee's ranking process, which Mr. Keller just referenced, one intersection, Havre and Chestnut Street, was advanced for final design and construction funding. The other three intersections were not advanced for funding. Funding for Havre and Chestnut Streets was approved at June Town Meeting in 2022. Short-term improvements that could be made at the other intersections, including cutting brush back, adding signage, and restriping travel lanes, occurred in 2022. Shortly after the June 2022 approval, a state transportation bond bill was approved and included earmarks for three of the intersections, Havre and Chestnut, Park and Central, and North and Central. This funding is earmarked for North Reading, but is not available to the town until such time as it's released by the state administration. This process can take years, depending upon the earmark. I'm in constant communication with Representative Jones about the release of these funds, as well as other funds that might be made available at the state level in place of a bond earmark. The Havre and Chestnut design will be brought forth for public review sometime in the next few weeks. I expect there will be a public hearing, as well as a review before the Select Board. The DPW intends to resubmit the other three intersections for consideration, excuse me, the DPW resubmitted the other three intersections for consideration for the fiscal year 2025 capital process. However, in consultation with the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, they will be considered during the fiscal year 2024 process for potential funding at the upcoming June annual town meeting. The DPW director is also asking our engineers to update all cost estimates for consideration by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. For Park and Central Streets, we're also working with the engineer and the homeowner to potentially install a guardrail in the short term. I know there's a lot of concern in the community for each of these intersections. I want the community to know that we are working within the resources that we have available, but that they have been limited. We're hopeful that Town Meeting will approve additional funding in June for the remainder of the intersections. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kellinger, are we looking in capital improvement, we're looking for an updated estimate on those, right?
We have $820,000 in there. We don't know what the cost of the guardrail will be, that's the only addition to this. The 820, I understand, would be enough to take us through the construction.
So that was our understanding at the time the projects were submitted, but because of the cost issues we've seen with nearly every project, we're asking for an update.
All right. Well, we could still ask for the update without inclusion of the guardrails, right? We can ask for that separately, right? So it doesn't prolong our getting the cost.
Correct. We, we know, we're all, we're all pushing this to have this information for the Capital Improvement Plan Committee to rank.
Right.
In short order. The guardrail is a concern. I don't think it's a major cost concern, because we have an available contract, we can acquire that off of. And candidly, I think our hope is try to do that well before this, even before Town Meeting.
And I think in the study too, they talked about other things that could be done, like, at least on the, on the, on the side where the, where Ipswich River is, just cutting back some of that, some of that foliage, which, I mean, of course, we, we don't like to do that, but at least in that intersection, so there's a better line of view, I think was another thing that the former engineer mentioned that could be done. There's little things, I think, that might make a big difference, just in terms of visibility, you know, that are also in addition to the proposed comping measures that we studied previously. I think those should just be, those should just be done now, so we don't need to wait to have those things done. We should paint the crosswalk, and what if in a fluorescent color is barely visible? Things like that, that we, we should and can do now that will help somewhat with safety concerns that are there, actually, for all those intersections, not just the one that we have on the top of our mind because of the fatality. So, but I appreciate that. I also appreciate you, you know, getting that back on a faster track for us on CIC too.
It was, it was oversight that came in often, it was on, and it was stayed on.
And, and we mentioned it, we talked about it at length, and knowing that was an important safety issue.
Listen, we told Town Meeting last year, when we were working with the, the Havre and Chestnut, that the other three would be coming back this year, and that was the intent of the committee.
That's great. All right, thank you. Is there any other, any other questions on that outside? Okay, great. Good.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging around so long. Next order of business is public comment. Oh, my words. We said enough, huh? Anybody here for public comment? Anybody attending for public comment? Attending, you're going to have to help us out with that. We can see it here, but I don't see any hands. Everybody went to bed. Except for us. All right. Next order of business, appointments?
Yep.
Good night, thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. We made it to the second page.
Yes, made it to the second page, folks.
PM, yes, thank you. I can start.
Oh, thank you so much, Jill, for your help.
Thank you. Do you want me to start?
Let's do it.
Yep.
These are all, these are named, call, roll, call, votes.
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following name for appointment to the Cultural Council for terms to expire on December 31, 2025, Michael Hay.
Motion by Mr. [inaudible]. Second by Mrs. Gonzalez, Cultural Council. We typically ask the liaison for recommending, even though there's only one.
He's right there.
One spot, yes.
He's the chair. Is it Michael He or Michael Hay? Sorry.
I believe it's He.
He, okay. We'll go with Michael He, I think that's right.
So, because we got the thumbs up from, from Phil, who's broadcasting right now, that was our, that was our liaison confirmation, so, and any further discussion? Mr. [inaudible].
Michael He.
Mrs. Gonzalez. Mrs. Gonzalez.
Michael He.
Mr. Studo.
Michael He.
Manny Pelly is Michael He.
Good, thank you. Madam Chair, I move to modify the vote of 12, 19, 22 for appointments to the Cultural Council by removing the name of Elizabeth Mitchell.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Is it update to remove the name for someone no longer serving?
Apparently. Yep.
They initially wanted to be a part of it, then they couldn't. They applied like earlier in, like in May of 2022, and then come around to December, then you couldn't do it.
Maybe they'll have more time next time around, but we'll remove the name. So that's the motion. All those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair.
I see a misprint. Says I cannot develop.
Yeah, no. She cut that already. You spelled Forest right too this time. Okay. Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following name for reappointment as a member to the Forest Committee as for terms to expire on December 31, 2025, Douglas Stode. He's an incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, again, Mr. Wallner.
Yeah, no, he's been on it for a long time. Happy to have him on. Our, that committee is restricted to three by state law. We're actually looking to potentially, like other towns have done, to expand the, the membership of that, but we would no longer be an official Forest Committee, even though we've seen other towns that have, they give it a different name, but it still does the same function plus extra things. Because three people is very limited to get this done. So, but that'll be a future proposal. For now, Douglas Stode is good to have on board.
Douglas.
Douglas Stode.
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 Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Mr. Wallner.
Aye. I'm sorry, Douglas Stode.
We're all tired.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Douglas Stode.
Mr. Studo. Manny Pelly is Douglas Stode.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following names for appointment. Reappointment as members to the Veterans Events Committee as for terms to expire as noted. Lori Martinez, December 31, 2023, and Dan Mahoney, December 31, 2025, who's an incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. Studo, Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yes, as liaison to that committee. Lori Martinez is interested in coming in. She came to a meeting to see what it was all about and definitely wanted to join in. So we're recommending her. And Dan Mahoney is an incumbent who was an associate member and now would like to be a full member. So we recommend both of them.
Two for two vacancies. All right.
Good. Okay, so.
Any, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We already made the motion, right?
Yeah.
We did a second.
Yeah.
And Mr. Wallner, any further discussion?
No.
Okay. So name, name, name roll poll vote. Mr. Wallner.
Lori Martinez, Dan Mahoney.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Lori Martinez, Dan Mahoney.
Mr. Studo.
Lori Martinez, Dan Mahoney.
And Manny Pelly is Lori Martinez and Dan Mahoney.
Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following names for appointment to the Transportation Committee for terms to expire as noted. Five openings, and we have four people. Diane Norris, December 31, 2025. Rebecca Griffin, December 31, 2025. June Story, December 31, 2024. And Daniel Greenberg, December 31, 2024.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Wallner.
I'm not the liaison, but we can just. We don't know who the liaison. But we.
We've made assumptions, but.
Ms. Hartman can speak for the Transportation Committee.
Now, now we really put you on the spot here.
So the names again, I think I've met all these people before.
Diane Norris, Rebecca Griffin, June Story, and Dan Greenberg.
Yes. So all of them who already supported me as volunteers in transportation research. Some of them have reviewed grant applications for me, and I recommend all four.
Thank you. Thanks for sticking around. All right, great. So we have a motion by Mr. Wallner and a second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Mr. Wallner.
Diane Norris, Rebecca Griffin, June Story, Daniel Greenberg.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Diane Norris, Rebecca Griffin, June Story, and Daniel Greenberg.
Mr. Studo.
Diane, Diane Norris, Rebecca Griffin, June Story, Daniel Greenberg.
And Manny Pelly is Diane Norris, June Story, Daniel Greenberg, and Rebecca Griffin.
Great. Good. Going into new committee. Youth Services. Madam Chair, I move to place in nomination the following name for reappointment as a member to the Youth Services Committee as for term to expire on December 31, 2024. Alexis, I'm sorry. Alexis, or Sarsenes.
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 Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. Studo.
And it's just, I'll just say it's a good recommendation. I was the CIF, and you want to add to that?
She came to the Commission on Disabilities.
Yep. Yeah. We've met her, and she's full of energy.
And I would like to say that I encouraged her to do that. So excited. She was a girl scout of mine.
Oh.
So we had a phone conversation, and I encouraged her to look into some committees and get involved. And so this is one that she chose.
She's a, she's a great, great girl. I can't say kid anymore.
She didn't look like a kid.
Okay, great. So motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Wallner.
Alexis Sarsenes.
I'm sorry, second by Mr. Studo. I'm sorry, Mr. Wallner.
Alexis Sarsenes.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Alexis Sarsenes.
Mr. Studo.
Alexis Sarsenes.
And Manny Pelly is Alexis Sarsenes.
Okay, moving on to minutes. Okay.
Madam Chair, through you, I believe you only have the February 27th meeting minutes in your packet. I do not believe you have the March 6 meeting minutes.
We'll hold over to that. Mr. Wallner.
So March 27th only, right? Not March 2nd?
February, no.
February 27th.
I'm sorry, February 27th. Excuse me.
Do you have to read all of that?
No.
No, no, no. This is a short, this is not the other.
I do, I have to read the acknowledgement of what we reviewed. Don't worry, it'll only take me 10 minutes.
Oh, sorry.
Come on, folks, we're here.
Okay, yeah, okay, let's keep it going.
We're here for the duration.
Let's get the, let's get these missed.
Let's get the February 27th approved.
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to approve the regular session minutes as written for the following dates: February 27th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. Studo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So for the, for the record, we're going to read in because we've been reviewing in portions the expansive request for our executive session minutes, and we've been reviewing the minutes. And this is an announcement with respect to our, our review. This is an acknowledgement of release of portions of Select Board Executive Session Minutes dated 6/15/20, Section 3 S S B C litigation, 6/1/20, Section 3 S S B C litigation, 5/18/20, Section 3 S S B C litigation, 5/4/20, Section 3 S S B litigation, 5/4/20, Section 3, 412 and 14 Concord Street, 4/15/20, Section 3 S S B C litigation, 4/15/20, Section 3, 303 Main Street, 4/15/20, Section 3, 327 Main Street, 4/15/20, Section 3, 412 and 14 Concord Street, 3/23/20, Section 3 S S B C litigation, 3/9/20, Section 3 S S B C litigation, 3/9/20, Section 3, 412 Concord Street, 2/29/20, Section 3 S S B C litigation, 2/29/20, Section 3, 412 Concord Street, 2/10/20, Section 6, 412 Concord Street, 1/27/20, Section 6, 412 Concord Street, 1/27/20, Section 3, Firefighter Union on Fair Labor Practice, 1/27/20, Section 7, Open Meeting Law, 1/13/20, Section 6, 412 Concord Street, 1/13/20, Section 7, Open Meeting Law, 12/16/19, Section 6, Real Estate, 10/18/19, Section 3, Firefighter Union on Fair Labor Practice, 9/30/19, Section 3, S S B C litigation, 9/30/19, Section 3, Firefighter Union on Fair Labor Practice, 9/9/19, Section 3, Firefighter Union on Fair Labor Practice, 6/17/19, Section 3, S S B C litigation, 6/10/19, Section 3, Firefighter Union Arbitrations, 5/20/19, Section 3, Firefighter Union Arbitrations, 5/20/19, Section 3, Firefighter Union on Fair Labor Practice Charge, 4/1/19, Section 3, Pending Litigation, 3/4/19, Section 2, Non-Union, 1, 4/10/19, Section 3, S S B C litigation under the open meaning law, subject to any necessary redactions under the Public Records Law. Acknowledgment of review and continued non-disclosure of portions of Select Board Executive Session Minutes dated 6/29/20, Section 3 Police, 6/15/20, Section 3 Police, 6/1/20, Section 3, 10 Dogwood Lane Litigation, 6/1/20, Section 3, 20 Elm Street, 6/1/20, Section 3 Police, 6/1/20, Section 3 Firefighters, 6/1/20, Section 3 DPW, 5/18/20, Section 3 Police, 5/18/20, Section 3 Firefighters, 4/15/20, Section 3 Police, 4/15/20, Section 3 Health Insurance, 3/23/20, Section 3 Firefighters, 3/9/20, Section 3 Health Insurance, 2/29, Section 3 Collective Bargain, 2/10/20, Section 3 Non-Union, 1/13/20, Section 3 Police, 12/16/19, Section 3 Police, 12/16/19, Section 3 Firefighters, 11/18/19, Section 3 Non-Union, 11/18/19, Section 3 Police, 11/18/19, Section 3 Firefighters, 10/28/19, Section 3 Non-Union, 10/28/19, Section 3 Police, 9/30/19, Section 3 Non-Union, 9/30/19, Section 3 Firefighters, 9/19, Section, 9/19, 9/9/19, Section 3 North Reading Library Staff, N L S A, 9/9/19, Section 3 Firefighters, 9/9/19, Section 3 North Reading Superior Officers Association, 8/19/19, Section 3 Non-Union, 8/19/19, North Reading Patrol, nope, Section 3 North Reading Superior Officers Association, 8/19/19, Section 3 North Reading Patrol Officers Sergeants, 8/19/19, Section 3 Opioid Litigation, 7/15/19, Section 3 North Reading Superior Officers Association, 7/15/19, Section 3 North Reading Patrol Officers Sergeants, 7/15/19, Section 3 Firefighters Union Arbitrations, 6/17/19, Section 3 Non-Union, 6/10/19, Section 3 Firefighters Union Arbitrations, 5/20/19, Section 3 Non-Union, 5/20/19, Section 3 Firefighter Union Arbitrations, 4/22/19, Section 1 to discuss complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. 3/18/19, Section 3 Health Insurance, 2/25/19, Section 3 North Reading Library Staff, 1/28/19, Section 3 Health Insurance, 1/14/19, Section 3 Firefighters under, under the open meaning law, continued non-disclosure under the open meaning law. Acknowledgement of a release of portions of Select Board Executive Session Minutes as follows: 2/29/20, Section 6, 412 Concord Street, 11/18/19, Section 6, Water Rechlorination Facility, 10/28/19, Section 6, Water Rechlorination Facility, 11/18/19, Section 6, Water Rechlorination Facility, 10/28/19, Section 6, Water Rechlorination Facility, 9/30/19, Section 6, Water Rechlorination Facility, 8/19/19, Section 6, Water Rechlorination Facility, 3/18/19, Section 2, Non-Union, 2/25/19, Section 2, Non-Union, 1/14/19, Section 3 DPW, 1/14/19, Section 6, 2/17 Main Street. Next order of business is legal bills.
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for January in the amount of $14,369.87 as follows. General, $10,162.37. Labor, $4,207.50. 20 Elm Street, zero, for a total of $14,369.87.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. Studo. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have, I have some.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Just trying to find it on my packet.
Nice reading.
Yeah, okay, I, I don't know.
Not supposed to be reading, but.
No. Was, um, I thought I saw the charges for the minutes. Were they on there?
I believe so, yes.
Um, Town Council. Um, having to redact or pull over. Do we know the total amount that we've paid for that?
Madam Chair, through you, I do not.
For minutes that had to be released?
I do not have the total amount, but I can request it from Town Council.
Can we request that?
Sure.
Um, and was there any attorney fees that were involved for the special town meeting?
Madam Chair, through you, they may not be on this particular bill, but we did have Town Council present at both the hearing and at the meeting and also consulting with them leading up to the meeting.
And special town meeting was around $10,000, was that?
That's generally the estimated price, yeah.
Could we get a, a total amount of tax and dollars that went towards minutes approval and time spent for special town meeting? Just so that everybody knows.
Sure.
So you're just, let me just, so you want to have a specific invoice related to having to look and redact?
Total number, yeah.
Yeah, total number.
Yeah.
Total number, yeah. And then a separate invoicing related to the cost for council to tap me.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Understood.
Mrs. Gonzalez, do you want that, and we, we hold off on the vote here? Or do you want to, or is it your intent to proceed to voting on approval?
No, we can go on.
Okay. So I had a motion by Mr. Wallner and a second by Mr. Studo. Any further discussion? I'm sure that the bill is going to be pretty substantial because of the expansive nature of the request. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Town Administrator's report.
Madam Chair, through you, one item. I know we've had discussion at the recent budget hearing regarding the hiring of firefighters. And I've been in touch with the fire chief. We are in, we have a, for us, an expiry of a service list that we are seeking to make a hire, make hires off of to fill three of the positions. Three candidates that we are looking to hire our E M Ts, but not paramedics. So there will be a cost incurred, and I know that there's been some discussion about getting into the executive session portion of it. But quite frankly, the additional time required to wait for the new list, then go through the process of getting folks to come respond and sign off and see whether we're able to proceed with hiring paramedics at that time. Quite frankly, the chief and I both feel it's going to take too long. So we know that there are four vacancies right now. We would love to fill three of them, and that is the intention moving forward as soon as tomorrow. We know there are two more vacancies upcoming that we'll be able to utilize posting for a paramedic list and see if that incentive works. So I just want folks to know that, not abandoning that strategy, but there is urgency right now with regard to three of the positions. So we are intending to proceed. And I know that that wasn't explicitly said at the hearing or at the prior discussion, but I felt I should share that with you after my discussions with the chief. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So did you actually also inquire, I forgot to ask this, but did you inquire about the safer grant? I know that it was denied for the last application, but is there a capability or an availability cost to seek that again for at least a portion of the cost of the new hires?
So I haven't spoken with the chief about whether or not the timing of when that will be available. But generally, that is a grant that we apply for in the second half of the calendar year. So say June, July, I believe. And then we do a general here in December, but I will confirm that with him.
Okay. So there might be a possibility too to help fund those new.
Correct. And then again, these positions are filling existing staffing levels that are vacant due to retirements.
Right, but his proposal to add new staffing, I mean, that would give us a little bit of a breather if we were able to get that, that funding for the first three years for those positions.
Absolutely.
You know, that we'd be able to, you know, get a little, you know, we, we, we're keeping them long-term, hopefully.
Yes.
Once they get out of their probation period, they pass all of their requirements to maintain a position. But that would be a big help.
It would be. I will follow up with the chief. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Gilberto? Thanks, Mr. Gilberto. Old and new reports. We have gotten seven hours older, six hours older. What's the report?
That's the report.
We're six hours older now this evening.
Can't get those six hours.
I'll just be very brief. I got to on the weekend, got to see the eighth grade girl basketball team. And it's the River Valley Championship, and they were just awesome on the court, and they ended up winning the championship. And I've never seen, I've never seen basketball played like that with girls. I mean, they were just out of, apparently, they're going to be rocketing right through high schools, what everybody believes. So this team was just amazing. It was amazing to watch eighth graders do things. It's the same kind of level as when we see them do the plays and music. I mean, it's just, you just can't believe how professional these people could be. And we're sinking three pointers, we're doing layups. It's just amazing. So congratulations to them, and congratulations to our town for having athletics be such a major part of our lives. It's a good thing to see. That's it. Thank you.
This is Studo.
They're anticipating six to 12 inches of snow, so that will pretty much guarantee we go over the snow removal budget.
Thank you.